Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the February 28th North Hampton School Committee Meeting. I'm Mayor Gina Louise Shara, the Chair of the School Committee. This is a special meeting scheduled for the first few budget and there's some other items on the agenda. This meeting is being held remotely on Zoom pursuant to the modification of the state's open meeting law for the COVID-19 pandemic. And seeing it all participating on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. I will begin by asking the clerk to please call the role of the school committee.
Mayor Shara.
Present.
Member Robbins.
Here.
Member Gezies.
Present.
Member Stein.
Present.
Member Levy.
Present.
Member Miller. I saw you.
You're muted, Member Miller.
Present.
Member Goldman.
Present.
Member Agna.
Present.
And Member Davis. I don't think she's with us yet. But, Your Honor, we have a forum.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. We will now open up public comment. I just want to clarify that item C under new business is not about voting on a mask mandate for the schools. The city of Northampton still has an indoor mask mandate by the Board of Health. So the agenda item is about proposed changes to the school policy, but not a vote on keeping or lifting the mask mandate. I just wanted to clarify that for any anyone in the public who just read the title of it and wasn't clear on what's actually going to be discussed. If you wish to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature. I see some of you are already doing that in the bottom menu bar under reactions. If you're calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. If you're having trouble raising your hand, you may use the chat feature and send a message to me, but that's the only thing that we will use chat for. I mean, only during public comment. Before you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. I will set a timer for three minutes to ensure everybody has equal opportunity to speak. And I ask all but the school committee turn off your video until called upon. Only the person recognized has the floor. Thank you. So the first person whose hand is raised is Adrian Staub.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you for taking my comment. So I'm Adrian Staub. I'm a parent of kids at Leeds and at the high school. I'm a professor at UMass. I'm a cognitive scientist who studies reading and language processing, which is somewhat relevant to my comment, I guess. I'm one of the authors of the Gazette op ed from less than two weeks ago that argued that there is now no reason for local school districts to maintain mask mandates. I've also spoken a few times to this committee and perhaps I'm becoming somewhat notorious, but I'll I'm speaking on that issue again, even though I know you're not voting on that issue tonight. So in thinking about this issue, I've been motivated by two considerations. On the one hand, there is a real lack of evidence that mandatory masking of children has had much of any effect on the spread of COVID here or anywhere else. On the other, I see the consequences for the education, mental health, and social and emotional development of children as truly tragic. This is not about my own children, who are actually doing fine, perhaps because we've provided ways for them to engage in quite a lot of unmasked interaction with their peers, and we have minimized fear by making it perfectly clear that the virus actually poses essentially no risk to them. But I'm acutely aware that other children are not so lucky. In particular, I think about the developmental consequences of this very extended period of masking for children who have speech delays, or who are struggling to read, or who are hard of hearing, or who have autism, or who are second language learners. I also think about the broad, long-term implications for children's sense of security and community of living under this regime of forced separation from each other and from their teachers. The upshot of all this is that, in my opinion, extending the forced masking of our children one day longer than absolutely necessary is a grave moral mistake. I think we have lost sight of what an extreme thing we have done with our children's development, so that now for many people it feels normal. But it is not normal. It is not. Now that even the CDC, which has been the most conservative agency in the world around these matters, has given its approval for dropping school mask mandates, we must do it. And we must do it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Patrick.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Patrick Bowen. I live in Ward 1 in North Hampton, and my son is at Leeds. The proposed change, the face mask policy, wasn't posted ahead of the meetings. I don't know exactly what's being proposed. What I'm asking each of you from my son, the kids in North Hampton, and honestly for yourselves as school committee members, school committee members, is that you eliminate the school's face masking policy in fall and defer to the Board of Health and the state from now on. Schools are really important. Schools are one of our last great socialist institutions in this country. This committee has many, many responsibilities as part of this work. I've been to these budget meetings a few times before. They are not short. There are many topics that must cover that often take hours and hours. I'm asking you to unburden yourselves the responsibility of public health, of being public health experts as well. Having a board of people who aren't specialized in health read out their Twitter feeds to each other is not a good use of energy required to be effective members of the school committee. I doubt any of you chose to volunteer your time to the community in order to involve yourself in arguing about COVID rules. Please remove yourself in this debate by ending the school's face mask policy enacted in August. This will allow school buildings to be treated like any other building. The CDC's recent metrics updates treat schools like any other building. I suggest the school committee take that as a signal to remove yourselves and remove themselves from this debate permanently. These last two years have been really hard on our kids. So many little things have disappeared. Some of them are back to an extent, some aren't, such as science fairs, art fairs, school plays, playdates, field trips, students together on the carpet, being read a book, playing with classmates, athletics, et cetera. Lots of big and small milestones. Kids have suffered academically, emotionally, socially, and more. Much of the responsibility for our social safety net has has fallen on schools and will continue to fall on schools, and it's a big job to be done now. As you vote to remove the school's masking policy tonight and focus the work of this committee bag where it belongs, on education. Please leave COVID health policy to the Board of Health and the state. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next is Emily Webster.
Hi, thank you. I'm Emily Body. I'm a resident of North Hampton and a parent here. It is time that we make masks optional for all. Our kids need and deserve normalcy. I'm going to make four points to support my position. One, DUCI and the CDC have shown the path forward, and now is the time. Two, vaccines are highly effective and protective, and one-way masking works. Vaccines are available to anyone in NPS that wants them. While we now know that the vaccines do not have a profound impact on spread or infection, we do know they are highly effective in protecting the vaccinated from severe disease. Furthermore, many scientists and physicians are encouraging one-way masking, whereby a well-fitted mask protects the wearer. Some teachers and families may be worried about this next step. I hear that. Remember, the way that families felt comfortable returning to in-person learning was by returning to in-person learning. The same will apply here. We must practice empathy and compassion, but we must not let fear drive our policy. Three, the harms of masking children outweigh the perceived benefits. Evidence of school masking effectiveness remains weak. The risk of severe disease in children from COVID-19 has always been low, and the evidence does not support the claim that children are asymptomatic spreaders. Millions of children around the world and country have not worn masks at school at all this year. Even in the UK, where they have never worn masks under the age of 12, even when schools were open all last year before vaccines were even available, these places have not had worse outcomes. The negative implications of masking and other pandemic restrictions for children are, however, clear. They impact literacy, speech, emotional regulation, connections with peers, and certainly the list does not end there. Four, we have an urgency of normal. Children are experiencing disproportionate restrictions and at a cost. Our children need to see each other's faces and the faces of their teachers. They need casual chat and banter at lunch. They need to get a new message, one that doesn't convey that they are disease vectors or a danger to others. Our children need normal now, and mask choice for all is a step in the right direction. In conclusion, I'll borrow recent words from the Boston Globe's editorial board. For elementary school-age kids, the pandemic has dominated a fifth, or a quarter, or even a third of their lives. It's time for them to breathe easier. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mindy Haskins Rogers. Mindy, you're unmuted, but I can't hear you.
Me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'm a parent of a Leeds student. I'm a high-risk parent of a Leeds student, and masking is what has made it possible for my child to be in school. I am aware that for many children, the effects of COVID have been mild or negligible, but the mandate of the district has always been teaching all children, teaching all children. And although in our family, it's a parent who's high-risk, I know there are high-risk children. And as soon as everybody unmasks, and it's made optional, and only the high-risk children and members of high-risk families are masked, that will single them out, it sends them the message that this is a community where every person has to act on their own behalf, and the community doesn't help to protect each other. I think that's really tragic. And also, I want to say that although a small number of children have been severely ill and died during this pandemic, I think close to 150,000 children at this point have lost a parent to this disease. And that is a trauma that will far outlive the discomfort of wearing a mask. We know that in-school transmission has been low, and although we don't have data on what will happen yet when kids take off masks, we know that all of our layered protections have helped to keep that transmission low and made school a safe place for all students. So I'm grateful for everybody's participation in these precautions this year. I'm grateful for all the children that mask up so that my child can also be in school. And I'm urging you and asking you, please, to act as a community to protect the more vulnerable members and keep our keep our masking in place, because it's what makes it possible for us to be there, for my child to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Otis Rogers.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I would just like to say that I think that the masking has been very effective in keeping COVID from spreading in schools. I'm a public school teacher in the Springfield Public Schools, and although we have had extremely high rates of positivity in all of our testing, so far, we've managed to make sure that almost no transmission has occurred in school. I think it is a false presumption to assume that somehow that is magic, or that somehow if we all take off our masks in school, that somehow it's just not spreading in schools. I think that is, the precautions that we've made so far have been important. And I think that as a member of a high-risk household, it really means a lot to me and my family that our son can continue to go to school. And I don't think it's a large sacrifice to make to just not fix what isn't broken. I know we all want to return to normal. I know we all want to go back to our regular lives, but I think that we can continue just a little longer until we know it's safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tiffany Ross.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Tiffany Ross. I live in Southampton, and I have children in a neighboring school that sometimes that school sometimes looks towards Northampton to guide some of its own policies. So thank you for hearing my comment in support of a mask optional approach for Northampton. I've been watching this pandemic and living it with all of you for the last two years. I've poured all of my energy during that time into making sure that my kids are thriving. For my family, that has meant prioritizing normalcy and wellness above simply the absence of COVID. We've known since fairly early on that this pandemic is not putting children at severe risk, and also that kids are not primary spreaders in transmission chains. Yet, we have we have forced children to submit to the most severe COVID restrictions, like masking throughout the day, silent lunches, distancing, and the like. Many other countries, states, and districts in masks either have been the whole time or are now mask optional. This includes districts right here in the valley. Our state leaders and their highly qualified experts have deemed it safe to remove masks. The CDC has also amended its guidelines. They have followed the science. What would be unique about Northampton that would preclude making masks optional? One-way masking is a viable option. Northampton is full of talented and capable people. Optional masking can be done thoughtfully in Northampton. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Liz.
One point of order, Mayor. I know we're at our 15-minute limit for public comment based on the rules, so I'd like to make a motion to extend the public comment time.
So the rules state that 15 minutes be allowed for the public to address the committee at the discretion of the chair. To continue past 15 minutes doesn't need a suspension of the rules. I and, you know, I've asked our parliamentarian about this, and who I believe is on here, although Annie, Member Seraphie Cox is on here, but she's not a co-host yet, so she can't unmute. But, you know, this has never, the rules have never been suspended for public comment. I don't think that it's necessary. And, you know, I believe that public comment creates an important space for the community, and the practice has been that we continue with comment. But I don't see, oh, Emily, you're you're just a black box. It might be that you're camera.
I'm in a car. Apologies.
You're in a box. Did you want to, anything you want to share about that?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, and thank you for raising this question, Member Stein. I do think that it can be something that can be clarified by the Rules and Policy Subcommittee when they look at the rules of procedure, but certainly the past practice has been to that and end the comment, you know, the sentence that states about 15 minutes, at the end of it states at the discretion of the chair. So I think in, you know, the past practice has certainly been to that that it's at the discretion of the chair how long the public comment is. And certainly, I've been in many, many meetings where the mayor asked, the previous mayor to this mayor, asked people to be courteous of other people's time and limit their comments to a certain amount of time. But but I never saw the previous mayor cut off public comment. So so I I don't think that it is needed, but certainly it can be clarified when we look at the rules of procedure in the Subcommittee.
So Emily, just to be clear, what you're saying is that there is a sort of parliamentary question about it, but based on practice, you don't think we need to vote?
I am saying that as I read the sentence, I would interpret it the way that it has been interpreted in the past, which is that we don't need a vote.
Okay.
But certainly, it can be even further clarified so that there is not confusion in the future.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, Member Stein. Liz, let me, if you hadn't been unmuted, let me unmute you now. There you go.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Bowen. I'm the reading specialist at Leeds and the mother of a second grader at Leeds. I was not prepared to make a comment. I know that most kids don't mind wearing masks, and many kids are good at wearing them. Most kids are not experiencing easily observable, like, negative impacts on their learning as a result of mask wearing, but some are. And I know that to many of you, the claim that masks are creating a barrier to learning to read or to, like, socially interact with peers can seem silly because your kid is fine, your kid has learned to adapt. My kid is fine, too. But some kids aren't. They're really, really not. And they matter, too. And the idea that masking is is neutral is really harmful. And I'm not advocating one way or the other, but the idea that we can't have a nuanced conversation about what trade-offs we're making here is really problematic and means that the people who are the most privileged, who are the most comfortable coming to school committee meetings and writing letters to the editor, are the only voices being heard. And putting parents whose kids are struggling in the position that we put families whose kids needed in-person learning last year in, of choosing whether to violate their child's privacy or let a harmful, unscientific policy continue. And I just, I don't know why I expect better of Northampton at this point, but I really would like to continue to be optimistic about people's ability to care about families besides their own. And the idea that because your family benefits from masking, it's not okay to discuss that some kids are negatively impacted from it is incredibly selfish, and I'm deeply disappointed by how much of it I see from the community. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Do not see any further hands. Let me just, Roz, let me get back up here. Roz Chapman.
Hi, I'm just trying to get myself off mute here, and I'll put myself
Hi, I'm just trying to get myself off mute here, and I'll put myself on video. So, thanks. I, like the prior person, I was not planning to comment, but I feel compelled to. So I'm Roz Chapman. I'm a caregiver at the Jackson Street School. I've got two girls in the fourth grade. I just want to, you know, I really appreciate everybody's comments. This is a really difficult conversation, and I think there's a lot of different points of view on it. I just want to share what I'm hearing. And what, what we know is, I think, masks work and that the science shows that masks work. I have a household with a high-risk caregiver who is very vulnerable. And my kids have had multiple contacts, close contacts in the school, and I feel really comfortable that their classes are masked. And we have been fortunate that COVID has not entered our household. I think, too, the numbers, we know the numbers remain high. And we know that there's a number of high-risk individuals in our community who, like Mindy shared, are, are only able to get our kids in school. And, and my kids, you know, they struggle, too. And I just, I think what we don't know, we don't know the risks of long COVID. We can make assumptions now that, that the mild cases have affected or not affected children. We, I don't think we have enough distance from what's happening. So I think this, I, I, I agree. This is a really hard decision for folks to make, and there's a lot of different points of view. But I just want to ask the school committee to think hard about staying the course and keeping the continuity on masks for a little longer. You know, the numbers are high, masks work, the science shows that masks work. There are high-risk individuals, and I, I don't, I don't think we can assume that because people have privilege or not, or can attend or not, that, that their points of view could be one way or another. So I say, let's stay united, let's stay the course. Until the numbers drop, let's, let's keep the masks on place. And we don't know, we don't know what we don't know today. But I just want to say again that masks work. I think we should keep them. And I appreciate the opportunity to make a comment.
Thank you. Next is Nora DeJesu.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Nora DeJesu. I am an employee at Bridge Street School, an educator there, and I also have two children there. I 100% agree that we do not know, this still feels too early to know what we are letting ourselves be exposed to, to, to remove mask-wearing at this point. It's not, it's not just about the children, and believe me, the staff at Bridge Street are, is completely dedicated to all students, from the most vulnerable ones to the ones that are strong and thriving. But we have to look out for everybody, the educators, the families, the caregivers, and there's, although nobody is like in love with being, wearing masks all the time, it's, we have adopted, and I think it's premature to, to give up wearing masks. It's, it's important. It's important for the safety of everybody, as well as the families of all the people who are involved walking into our buildings. And we are on a Zoom right now. We are not in person. So let's keep that in mind. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any further hands. I apologize. I had said in my preamble that you could send me a chat if you were having trouble raising your hand. I'm not seeing the chat feature on here. It may be turned off. So I, if you're trying to raise your hand and you can't, if you can turn on your camera and like wave at me, I'm looking right now, and please, school committee members, also have a quick look with me and tell me if you see anybody who seems like they're trying to raise their hand. We're trying to get my attention, but I'm not seeing anybody else. But there is a hand that just went up. Christopher Golden.
Hi, sorry, little video. Ah, there we go. Hi, I'm Chris Golden. I am a parent in Northampton of two children who at Jackson Street School. And just quickly, I wanted to say I am concerned about the idea of removing a mask mandate in the schools soon. I mean, obviously, it won't be forever, but the numbers are still high. And for me, my children and my family, as far as I know, there is nobody who's high-risk. So I support masking not to protect my family. Well, when, when the numbers were really high, it was, but at this point, I'm not particularly worried about that. Some of the members of my family have gotten COVID, and they've gotten through it, and that's great. But not everybody is in as privileged a position as we are. And I feel that being in a community means protecting those who are most vulnerable. I do hear that there are children who are not thriving with masks, that masks may be having a detrimental effect on them. I do wonder why we can't have a discussion about how to ensure that children who really are affected, not just a little inconvenience, because my kids are inconvenienced, too, and it may be affecting some of their development, but not enough to me to remove the masks. But for children who are doing worse than that, you know, maybe there'd be a way of deciding that some people don't have to wear masks, some minority, I don't know. This is something, I'm not an expert, I haven't thought that through, but it does concern me to think that we either get rid of masks entirely or we keep it. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any hands, and I don't see anyone trying to, oh, sorry, I do. Rita, hold on, there you go.
Hi, I'm Rita, and I have three children. Two of them are in Leeds Elementary, and one of them is in JFK. And I'm in a family, would you have a high-risk person? And I do hear all the points. I do think that masking is premature. And I, I do understand that some children do suffer from that. What I am hoping that if there, the masking is lifted, I'm hoping that, like, it happened in Leeds Elementary, that the teachers will not say that it's okay to take down the masks, that it will be optional to the children. And I had to speak to my children's teacher saying that that cannot happen, that if it's optional, it's optional, it's up to my kids, it's, they should ask me, and the teacher should not say that it's okay to take it down. Does that make sense?
We don't respond during public comment, I'm sorry, but.
Okay, but that, that's my comment, and I do hear all points. I do think that it's premature, and I hope that the right decision is made here for all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay. So I'm going to do another scroll through, since I did find somebody. Again, wave your hand at me if you can't raise your virtual hand, or you're struggling to raise your virtual hand. Turn your camera on and wave at me, and I'm looking for you. Okay, I see no further comments. So in that case, we will continue with the agenda. Thank you, everyone who spoke of public comment. And our next item is any announcements. School committee members, I'm looking for you. Member Stein.
Sorry, I couldn't get my virtual hand up fast enough, so I went old-school. Apologize, I've got too many things open here. I just wanted to send my, my deep sympathies and my solidarity to the people of Ukraine and all those around the world suffering illegal occupation and state violence, and call on all of us to resist the rising fascism and antisemitism. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Um, other, any other announcements from school committee members? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to recommended actions or the consent agenda. There's only one item this evening, and that's the acceptance of a donation. This is from the J Team in Deerfield, and it is $20,000 in hardwood lumber to the Northampton High School. That's 5,000 board feet of lumber that they are gifting. And that is the only item on the consent agenda. So is there a motion, please? So, move. Motion to accept the consent agenda has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by members, made by Member Goldman, seconded by Member Stein. There is no discussion on the consent agenda or recommended actions, so roll call, please, Annie.
Member Robbins.
Yes.
Member Gazy. Yes. I think Member Seraphy Cox has left once again. If I'm wrong, Member Seraphy Cox? I don't think so. I don't think you're here. Member Stein.
Yes, with thanks to the donor.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Skyr.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for that gift. And we are moving on to new business. First item is the first-view budget of FY 2023. And I will hand it over to Dr. Provost. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Let me start by sharing my screen. Okay. Patrick said in his, his public comments tonight that he's been to a lot of budget meetings, and they're not short. I'm afraid that we will be continuing in that trend, tradition tonight, because there's a lot of information to present, although I will try to be as brief as possible. I cannot see people while I'm presenting with my screen shared. So if folks have questions, I'm happy to take them at any time during the presentation instead of asking you to hold on. So just feel free to either interrupt me, or if someone wants to manage hands, I would appreciate that.
You can look for hands.
Okay, great. So as members of the committee know, our budget for the next fiscal year must be passed by April 15th, which is a little less than two months away, and will come very quickly. Tonight, I'll be presenting the recommended budget in broad strokes and seeking a sense of the committee, which would allow our budget to move forward with the next steps, which will be the presentation of detailed budget books to be delivered to the committee 10 days from now. As I begin the discussion of the budget plan, I'd like to thank the members of the Budget and Property Subcommittee, Member Agna, Member Goldman, and Member Stein for their feedback and support during the budget development process. I'd also like to thank the members of the Administrative Leadership Team, who've been working on the budget since January 6th, especially Nick Bernier, who has had to deal with me as a constant presence in his office for the past two months. Nick, it's almost over, but not quite, so hang in there. As the title of this presentation highlights, I believe it's important for us to begin transitioning from a COVID recovery mode, which was characterized by increased spending supported by federal emergency subsidies, to a plan for long-term fiscal stability as governments pull back on pandemic school funding. Before getting into the details, I would just like to hold up the DIP. The first statement here is from the preamble. It says, "All students will have access to an opportunity for a high-quality education." Embedded within our district improvement plan is a commitment to empowering and supporting individuals who hold identities that have been historically marginalized, and a commitment to provide all students with access and an opportunity for a high-quality education. The DIP also calls for us to use data from universal screening and other assessments to examine the efficacy of curriculum and instruction we're providing for historically underserved groups, and to determine and equally distribute Tier 2 and Tier 3 resources. We hold these goals at the forefront as we develop this budget plan, and I'll be returning to them specifically at, at different points in tonight's discussion. There are four key messages I hope to convey tonight. The first is that recurring sources of state and federal revenue are expected to decline, and this is the main reason why we need to start moving from levels of spending we currently have and that we've needed during the acute phase of the pandemic to spending that is more sustainable over the long term. In addition to the economic necessity of trimming expenses at this time, I'll show you some evidence that a strong academic and social-emotional recovery is underway in our schools. While the recovery is by no means complete, a lot of students are catching up on unfinished learning from the period of school closures. So the challenges we face next year will be less daunting than the ones we faced in the current year. My third message is that the best way to address resource scarcity is to anticipate it as early as possible and to begin adjusting spending as soon as possible to minimize disruptions to our schools and staff. It is better to set a glide path to a lower level of resources than to maintain the status quo in face of punishing fiscal cliff when funds dry up. My final and related message is that we have pandemic relief funds available through FY '24 and a small portion of FY '25, so we can use these non-recurring funds to support academic and emotional recovery while making that glide path to a lower level of resources as flat and level as possible. First, I'd like to explain the state and federal components of school budget as they relate to the locally raised sources of school funds and show how the lack of support from both state and federal governments will pose ongoing challenges to the school budget. This chart shows Chapter 78 for the Northampton Public Schools. Chapter 70 is the main source of state funding for public education. As you can see, funding for our schools, this is state funding for our schools, peaked in FY '03, and is now actually less than it was 20 years ago. This is not in inflation-adjusted dollars, this is in actual dollars. And as you know, things are much more expensive now than they were 20 years ago. There's two reasons for this flattening of state funding. The Chapter 70 formula estimates the amount of funding needed to run each school district in the state. That is essentially the required net school spending amount, which is represented by the red line on this chart. That number is based on a number of factors, the most important of which is enrollment. In FY '03, Northampton had 300 more students than it has today. As you can see, even though the number of students has declined, the required net school spending amount has increased steadily. That's because the formula adjusts for the rising costs of education on an annual basis. So you might ask, if the amount the state says is required to run the district has increased approximately 50% over the past two decades, why hasn't the amount of state support increased accordingly? That brings me to the second component of Chapter 70, which is the state's estimate of each community's ability to raise funds. The ability to raise funds locally is based on local property values and income, both of which are much higher in Northampton than they were 20 years ago. Under the Chapter 70 formula, the minimum amount the state can be expected to contribute to a district is 17.5%. Based on its local property values and income, the target for Northampton is 17.5%. The state is trying to get us to the minimum level of aid. In FY '22, the state contribution was actually 22.4%, which is still above the target. So state support for Northampton can't grow under the law until they can get us down to 17.5%. And so what's been happening is the state has been basically level-funding us while the required net school spending amount increases in an attempt to get us down to 17.5%. And it will only be when we reach that minimum level of funding that we can expect to see any increases in state aid. The green line on this chart represents actual school spending for the district. It's generally acknowledged that over time, the state formula has not kept pace with the actual cost of educating students in Massachusetts. In FY '19, which is the last year that we have final figures for, actual school spending in Northampton was 125% of the required spending amount. For Massachusetts as a whole, actual school spending was 126% of the required spending amount. So we're right on track with the state for that. So we're right on track with the state for that. Seeing the green line representing our actual school spending above the $40 million mark may raise questions for some of you. If you look through our previous approved school budgets, the largest number you'll see is about 33 million. The difference between the amounts you find in our school budgets, which could more accurately be described as the school operating budgets, and the actual school spending amount is due to what is referred to as indirect costs of running the district. These are costs that are carried in the city budget, but that are actually directly attributable to schools. The largest component of these indirect costs is health insurance for school employees. You won't find any line item in our budget for employee health insurance. That's because the city has these costs included within its overall budget. However, because they are directly related to the schools, the insurance premiums paid by the city on behalf of school employees are included in the actual school spending figure reported to the state. There are some additional indirect costs that are also in that actual school spending amount. As I mentioned earlier, the Chapter 70 formula has not kept pace with the full costs of education over time. One of the places where the gaps have grown the most is in the estimated cost of employee health insurance. There is a current reform being phased in to address that problem by attributing a larger amount of the direct or the, the minimum spending amount based on the cost of health insurance. But as I said, that's being implemented over the course of many years, and the state is trying to reduce us from 22.4% support to 17.5% support. So increases to the Chapter 70 formula would be used to reduce the state's estimated overpayment to Northampton rather than reducing in any additional funding. The reason the actual spending number lags behind the current fiscal year again is because financials for the prior year cannot be reported until all the costs for the year have been accounted for. It then takes some time before data submitted to the Department of Education is verified and included in the actual school spending support that comes back. And so the chart also shows the contribution of federal, state, and local sources of the operating budget. You can see the federal component shown here in the yellow color is the smallest amount. And just like state funding, it has been flat or reduced for many years. This does not include the one-time COVID funding. The chart only shows the recurring federal entitlement grants, which have been a little less than 1.5 million. The federal funds are also driven by formulas based on enrollment and community wealth. So just as was the case with Chapter 70, federal funds have been stagnant for several years. And that's because wealth has been growing in Northampton, and so the federal government is seeing less of a need to support Northampton with federal dollars. The red component of the stack shows Chapter 70 state funds that I've already discussed in detail. The rest of the budget, from the top of the red line to the green line, is the part of the budget that comes from our city. It's the only part of the budget that's been growing. All of the staffing increases, wage increases, and educational materials and services that we've been able to bring to the district have been due solely to the support of our local government and taxpayers. Because as you can see, both our state and federal support has been essentially unchanged or reduced for many, many years, in the case of the state, decades. As I've said many times before, I thank the local taxpayers and city government, and the mayor specifically. As this chart so clearly shows, local government has been the sustaining force in our public schools. This chart provides a more detailed look at the federal component of our school budget. On the previous chart, this entire piece would have been what was represented in the, the small yellow line at the bottom. This just explodes it into a more detailed look as where the federal funding comes from. There are really four federal entitlements. The largest of this is the IDEA. Those are federal dollars meant to support the implementation of special education services. That's, they are represented in blue on this chart. Most of the rest of the federal, federal funds come in the form of Title I, which are funds meant to be used to address academic gaps often observed in students with low family income. This is one area where increase in community wealth has some very clear and direct impacts on the school budget. Title I funds must be distributed in a way that prioritizes schools serving larger portions of low-income students. Not that long ago, every school except the high school qualified for Title I. However, now due to the reduced economic need of the population served by Jackson Street in Leeds, Title I dollars can no longer be expended at those schools. So the red component of this chart is funding for Bridge Street, Ryan Road, and JFK Middle School exclusively because there isn't sufficient economic need at any of the other schools. Title II, represented here by yellow, are federal dollars to support teacher and administrative effectiveness, mainly through professional development. And Title IV, which is such a small component, it appears more like a line than a two-dimensional segment, are funds that can be used to support well-rounded learning experiences and health, and safe and healthy school climates. Another revenue source we use to build our budgets is the circuit breaker reimbursement. It's somewhat of a misnomer to call this a revenue source because it's a reimbursement to the district for funds spent in a prior fiscal year. The circuit breaker is triggered by certain students with disabilities who require services with costs that exceed four times the foundation amount. As I explained in previous slides, the foundation amount represents the amount the state believes it costs to educate a student in Northampton. The current foundation budget for Northampton is $11,316. Four times the foundation amount would be $45,264. So let's imagine a student who costs $100,000 to educate. In that case, the district would be eligible for a partial reimbursement on the amount spent above the $45,246, four times foundation threshold. So that remaining amount is the amount that the district could receive a reimbursement on. Now, the way the law is written, the reimbursement can be up to 75%. So the 75% cost could be about $41,000. However, the law is written that it's subject to appropriation, which means every year the legislature decides how much money to put in the circuit breaker program, and the actual reimbursement amount is based on whether that money goes far enough to support the 75% or not. In some years, it does support the 75% reimbursement. Sometimes it doesn't. So the amount we receive is dependent both on the amount of reimbursement-eligible costs we had in a prior year and the reimbursement rate set by the state legislature. As you can see, the amount of circuit breaker funding we have available for the budget tends to run between half a million dollars and 700,000, and we expect to be in that range for FY 23 as well. I'll also take a moment to sound a note of caution about our choice reserves, which we have built up as a balancing account in a rainy day fund for the schools. There are no restrictions on how choice funds can be used. So we've used them to cover expenses not included in the approved budget, including unexpected expenses that occurred during the course of a year, such as costs associated with educating new students who move into the district during the course of the year. The green bars in this chart show the beginning balances in our school choice accounts for the past several fiscal years. From FY 15 through FY 18, we collected more choice funding than we expended, so the balance grew. In FY 19, and again in FY 21, we had to draw more from the reserve than we collected. So you can see that there were modest reductions in those years. Those are represented by the blue bars, the negative blue bars. This year, there have been many unanticipated costs associated with recovery, recovery from school closures, many that fall outside of what is chargeable to ESRS. Mostly, these have involved additional personnel that have been needed to support students who entered our district with behavioral needs due to the school closures. We may be able to charge some of the salaries to emergency COVID relief funds at the end of the year, which would allow us to protect the reserves a little bit. And if the services are still needed next year, we will need to continue to draw on the reserves. That would set up a potentially very significant problem in FY 24, which is not this budget, but the budget after this budget that we're talking about tonight. When our current rate of spending would fully exhaust our reserves and leave us with a shortfall of more than a million dollars, that's represented by the red bar. So that would be a year in which we faced a million-dollar need to cut if we can't trim spending in order to address this really what is essentially deficit spending going on by tapping the reserves to the amount we have been. So to return to one of my key budget messages, the best way to address predictable resource scarcity is to anticipate it as early as possible and to begin adjusting spending as soon as possible to minimize disruptions to school and staff. We need to make adjustments in the upcoming year by, well, in the current year by charging whatever costs we can to emergency COVID relief. And in the next year, FY 23, by reducing spending from the reserves and to reduce the projected budget shortfall to FY 24 by beginning to make adjustments and reductions at this time. So that's the financial picture. At this point, I'd like to shift away from the somewhat grim assessment of our financial situation and share some hopeful news about the academic and social emotional recovery of students during the first months of this school year. This is a budget presentation, so I don't want to belabor student performance data. In an effort to condense this portion of the discussion as much as possible, I'll highlight achievement data from grades four and six because they illustrate some of the larger patterns apparent from our universal screening process. It's not that they are special in any way. It's that they are not special. They represent what all the, the, the grades look like, more or less. To give a high-level summary of the trends, I would share the following observations. We are seeing dramatic improvements in reading achievement at all grade levels. Two, the academic recovery in math is progressing at a slower pace with younger learners showing a more rapid recovery than middle school learners. And three, elementary students are showing typical levels of social emotional risk while middle and high school students continue to show some elevated levels of risk. Starting with our reading achievement for fourth grade, you may recall, those of you who were here last year or watching last year, the surprise I noted that our screening data for this time last year did not appear to show that school closures were having a negative impact on students in the upper elementary grades. We saw similar results in our elementary English Language Arts MCAS, which were higher than they ever had been before in spite of the school closure. As you can see from this chart, our elementary students are now showing exceptionally strong reading achievement as measured by our mid, one of our mid-year screening measures, which is the Ames Web. To explain how these box and whisker charts work, the top and bottom of the boxes show the middle 50% of the range of student results. The bottom whisker, which is the line going from the bottom, shows the range of students in the bottom 25% of scores. And the upper whisker, which is the line from the top, shows the range of students in the highest 25% of scores. The student scores are expressed in terms of national percentile rank. So if our scores perfectly matched the national averages, the box would range from the 25th to the 75th percentile, and the whiskers would go from 1 to 24 on the bottom and 76 to 99 on the top. It's important to note that the national norms were established well before the pandemic. So these results depict our students' performance compared to typical performance unimpacted by school closures or the pandemic. On the 2020 assessment, which was given just before the pandemic spread to the US, you can see that the box extended below the 25th national percentile to above the 75th percentile. This means there were many more students performing below expectations and many more students performing above expectations. There is a bifurcated distribution, in other words. In 2021, which was last year, school was mainly closed. The bottom box representing the 25th local percentile had moved up considerably. This meant that we had still had many more students performing above expectations, but far fewer performing below expectations. And once again, we saw this bear out on our MCAS results, which were the strongest they'd ever been in English Language Arts. On the assessment just given, the entire box is above the 50th percentile. This means that 75% of the current fourth graders in Northampton are reading in the top half of readers in the nation. And the top whisker ranges from the 96th to the 99th percentile, meaning 25% of fourth graders in Northampton are in the top 3% of readers. That's a very strong recovery. Here you see the same time series for mathematics. The fourth graders in 2020 were showing a strong performance. Last year's fourth graders were not so strong. They were about average. This year's fourth graders are again performing above average, almost on par with their peers from before the pandemic and above national norms. We've only been administering universal screening at the middle school for the past two years, so this time series only shows last year's sixth graders, who were above-average readers, and this year's sixth graders, who are well above average. As this chart shows, 75% of the sixth graders are in the top 40% of readers and 25% are in the top 3% of readers. The screening data in mathematics, the middle school, tells a different story. As compared to last year, there are more students with higher performance and more students with lower performance. That's why the second box is stretched in both directions. And it's stretched farther in the downward direction than in the upward direction. As you remember, we added math intervention support to the middle school to address the greater-than-anticipated need there. Unfortunately, we've struggled to staff that position. Additionally, the first math intervention at JFK filled a vacancy we had for a math coach, which may have also impacted our ability to provide math support for middle school students. The next set of charts shows the results of the Social, Academic, and Emotional Behavior Risk Screener, known as the SABERS. This is the screener used to assess students' risk for behaviors that may impede their social, academic, or emotional success. We consider students' risk level on each of the three subscales. However, in the interest of time, I'll just talk about the overall level of risk, which represents the combined risk scores for all three scales. The CUT scores are set at approximately the first-in-standard deviation below the national mean, which, as you know from your normal curve, means that in any typical group of students, approximately 84% of students would be expected to have low risk, while approximately 12% would have scores indicating some risk, and 3% would be at high risk. As you can see here, that's exactly what we found for our elementary students, both during the school closure and this year. And just to be clear, this data is inclusive of all students in grades K to 5, not just the fourth graders who we're looking at in the previous discussion of achievement data. So really, the student, the elementary student's emotional development appears to be completely typical. In contrast, we find a greater-than-expected incidence of student at some risk or high risk for social, academic, or emotional problems at the middle school. In fact, the incidence of emotional concern is somewhat higher now than it was during the school closure. Of course, it's a different group of students. A new sixth grade came in and the prior eighth grade moved out, so we're not comparing the same students. But there is a higher level of risk. Last year, the middle school score was above the expected level of risk, and this year continues to be and is even showing higher risk than before. In the high school, we also found an elevated level of student risk, though it was not as acute at the middle school. I will point out that the participation rate was not as strong as I liked at the high school. This is the first time we were able to administer the SABERS, which is why I don't have data from years prior to now, and it may be why we didn't have as much participation as we would have liked to have had. There is somewhat of getting used to doing this, the assessment. But you still see that even within the two thirds who participated, there is a higher than expected level of risk for high school students. So that is what I can tell you about our academic and social emotional recovery. Let me begin talking about what we can do to begin trimming costs in response to flat state and federal funding. Given the fact that we're facing an economic outlook that calls for fiscal restraint and that we've made a good start, though by no means completed the work of helping all students catch up from unfinished academic and social emotional learning, the question now becomes, how can we best begin to trim costs and begin to shift from a pandemic mode to a more sustainable rate of spending? Once again, I'll thank the mayor for committing to a four percent budget increase for FY twenty three school year as promised to the taxpayers during the discussions at town hall meetings. Four percent is one million three hundred and thirty eight thousand four hundred and seventy six dollars. However, after factoring in other components of the school budget, including cuts we are expecting from the federal government, I believe we'll have a slightly smaller increase that we have to work with, an increase of just about one point three million dollars when you factor in the reductions from the federal government. We always begin the budget process by estimating the increased cost of doing business in the new fiscal year due to rising costs. We call these fixed cost increases. The largest component of that is always wage inflation. Salaries increase in four ways. Step increases based on seniority to the district, longevity bonuses, which are also based on seniority to the district, column advances, which are based on employee's level of education, and cost of living adjustments or COLAs. At this point, no COLA has been negotiated for the next year, but without any increase in COLA, we anticipate steps and longevity will raise wages of eight hundred sixty eight thousand two hundred dollars. So that is one of the fixed costs we look at, first of all, the main fixed cost increase. Due to the specialized nature of some services for students with disabilities, we need to purchase specialized equipment or bring in individuals with special expertise. The total cost of increases for those services for next year is a hundred and ninety two thousand dollars. We're also expecting much higher utility costs due to the inflation we're seeing in the energy sector and the fact that our consumption is way up due to the fact that we're leaving windows open to increase air exchanges and running a half a million dollars of air scrubbers constantly, which is really driving up our electric bill. And the school committee adopted policy E B A D, which restricts the use of pesticides on school properties. So the facility budget needs to increase to cover the cost of organics and specialized equipment as well as increased personnel that will be needed to maintain our properties under the new policy. Transportation costs are tied to the cost of inflation. So we anticipate our bus contract will increase eighty four thousand five hundred and seventy nine dollars next year. And due to a year of online learning, our technology, especially devices students were able to take home with them, experienced heavier than expected usage, and so we need to replace damaged equipment. We will be able to charge some of that to ESRS because, again, a lot of that damage was based on usage that was necessitated by the school closure, but we'll still need an additional fifty five thousand one hundred and fifty one dollars in the appropriation to maintain our technology at the current level. A lot of that is in the cost of subscriptions that the district holds. And there, that, those are just the cost of maintaining the current software packages that we have in the district. We've, there are also a number of other costs, small increases that are predictable and unavoidable that have just been lumped into this miscellaneous category, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars there. And we've also been told not to count on continued state support for the Early Childhood Education Program through the CPPI Grant. We have not figured this into the total yet, but we have a potential exposure of three hundred and forty thousand two hundred and ninety eight dollars there that we would have to find funding for if the CPPI Grant was not renewed by the state. So after looking at fixed cost increases, we need to look to see where we can save money. We continue to see savings in out-of-district special education tuition due to our ability to serve more students in inclusive programming in their own schools. That will save us two hundred and ninety three thousand six hundred and four dollars next year. We also have a number of retirements coming up. We anticipate hiring the replacements at lower steps and lanes. Through the turnover of staff, we'll save an additional two hundred and eighty two thousand five hundred and fifty four dollars. Altogether, that comes to five thousand, I mean, five hundred and seventy six thousand one hundred and fifty eight in savings. Subtracting the projected savings from the projected fixed cost increases and the amount of budget increase that we anticipate leaves us with about three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars available. However, to reiterate, that does not include the cost of any negotiated cost of living adjustment. So I strongly recommend that we begin implementing some cost containment measures. And I'll go through the recommended ones next. The first group is recommended line item reductions. These are items that appear to be over budgeted in the current budget. Reducing these line items will not impact services in any way. It simply appears that we have overestimated our costs in the following line items: tutors, homeless foster care transportation, bus drivers and special education transportation. We could trim almost sixty thousand dollars by reducing those lines again. It doesn't impact services one bit, it just appears that those lines are over budgeted right now. Next, there are items that we can charge to our COVID emergency funds. This is a short-term solution because the COVID funds will expire shortly after the end of FY twenty four and the amount of COVID funds is limited and not renewing. But shifting costs allows us to increase disability and stability and sustainability of our local budget, which should make it easier for us to implement other solutions when the COVID funds runs out. We've identified an additional one hundred and seventy five thousand dollars that can be moved from the local budget to the COVID grant. So that is the equivalent of a reduction. Then there are reductions to staff and programs. These will create long-term savings. I want to be absolutely clear that these reductions you see before you will not result in layoffs. Instead, we would use attrition to make the recommended reductions. Some staff might shift positions, some staff might shift schools, but no one would need to be handed a pink slip. First, I would propose that the central office position of grant coordinator be eliminated. The position is currently vacant, so it would not result in a layoff. Next, I would recommend eliminating line items for the school messenger app and padlet. Usage for these is not high, so I don't think there will be much of an impact. Then I'd recommend eliminating the contract with the garden educator. This is a contract service to the district. It's so it's not one of our employees, so it would not result in a reduction of any of our employees. The first grade ESPs were a recent addition to the school budget. Given the fiscal outlook, I think we should resume the traditional staffing patterns we had prior to adding ESPs to the first grade. This would not result in any layoff. We have several current vacant ESP positions that the staff could move into if you were to eliminate the positions tonight. But there are always vacancies within the ESP ranks and we would simply move staff who are currently in those positions into the other vacancies that we currently have or that we would have before this budget is implemented. It's also possible to eliminate a technology position at the high school without triggering a layoff because there's a vacancy coming up in the mathematics department. The current technology teacher is certified in mathematics. While there would be some impact on the availability of technology courses, it would not be as significant as it might appear at first blush because the technology department teachers are currently teaching four sections outside of the technology department, which is the equivalent of a two-thirds FTE position. Moving to two sixth grade teams at the middle school would allow the team structure to function with one less teacher. However, there's a social studies vacancy that will open due to retirement and that would provide a position for the sixth grade teacher who would be reduced to move into, so again, no layoff. And then eliminating the first grade at Jackson Street, the third first grade at Jackson Street would result in class sizes of twenty one and twenty two, which are comparable to class sizes in the current fifth grade at Jackson Street and in other classes at elementary schools across the district. When we get to the final part of the presentation, I'll discuss recommendations for using COVID funds to continue the work of academic and social emotional recovery to ease the transition from our current level of spending to a more sustainable level. One strategy will be to use funds to increase intervention support at the elementary level. In doing so, we would create a position that would be a position for an elementary teacher. So that would be a position that the teacher from the third first grade class could move into. So in the end, we'd be able to save just over six hundred thousand dollars without laying off a single school employee. So this slide summarizes. Oops. I think I might have gotten ahead of myself. Sorry, let me go back. This slide summarizes the recommended targeted reductions. I don't want to leave the impression that we're only reducing positions or prematurely suspending the work of COVID recovery. So I'll end the presentation with our recommendations for continuing the COVID recovery work. As I've already explained, using the COVID funds to continue this work is one way we can make reductions to the local budget without drastically reducing services or laying off staff. While we've undoubtedly made great strides in helping our elementary students read at or above grade level, our winter screenings still identify two hundred and fifty seven elementary students as at risk for reading problems. So we would like to add reading intervention support at the elementary levels. Now, as you know, we have lift-off learning this year, which is an after-school program, which I believe by the data that I just shared with you is having a very positive impact on student achievement, but it is problematic running it after school. There are additional costs with running it after school and it competes with other activities. What we are proposing to do, as you know from our ESRS spending plan, is to add reading, is to increase intervention supports. What, the way we would do that is by adding a full-time position at Bridge Street School. That, we would also be moving the current position, a person who's currently a point four six FTE, which is, and that's our terminology, it means someone who's essentially half-time, transferring that person to Jackson Street. So Bridge Street would get the equivalent of an increase of a half a position. Jackson Street would get the equivalent of a half a position increase. Then there's a point six reading interventionist at JFK who we would transfer to Leeds and a point eight reading interventionist at JFK who we would transfer to Ryan Road. So at the end of the day, all four elementary schools would have an increase in reading support. And the three schools that are showing the greatest numbers of students at risk, which are Bridge Street, Jackson and Leeds, would get slightly more support. So they'd all end up with two point eight positions, which is two full-time staff and one staff four days a week. And Leeds would end up with two point six, up from the current two point oh. Again, one of our district improvement goals in Goal Four is using the data to distribute resources equitably. That's what we're trying to do with this plan. The culture coach position, which we had high hopes for, did not work out at the middle school this year. And it took some time for us to find a suitable candidate for the grant-funded math interventionist position that was part of this year's budget. Normally, unspent funds would revert back to the general fund or to the district's reserve. However, since these positions were funded using ESRS dollars, the unspent funds can roll forward into the next fiscal year. Given the results of the winter screening, we propose to maintain the unspent portions of the JFK funds at JFK, which would permit them to continue having a second math interventionist position at JFK for a second year, hopefully keeping the staff that they currently have so that they could do that work right from day one, instead of struggling to find people to fill those positions. We'd also propose using ESRS funds to provide the middle school with dedicated ELA and math coaches. Currently, our two district coaches are each supporting over sixty teachers in five schools, which is quite a lot to ask of coaches. Given the information from the winter screenings, which are showing greater need at the middle school than at the elementary schools, what we'd like to do is to increase coaching support in addition to math intervention, as I described on the prior slide, to make sure that students can receive the best possible instruction, both at tier one or the general education classroom and tier two or small group support at the middle school. Having dedicated middle school academic coaches would also increase coaching support for the elementary teachers because the coaches would no longer be split among five schools. I just want to point out that these loading charts are showing just the general ed staff that the coaches are supporting right now. They do also work with special education teachers. So this may be an underrepresentation of the number of staff we're having our academic coaches work with right now. We can also continue working toward the goal of providing an ever-increasing portion of our student body with access to advanced coursework while simultaneously reducing class sizes across the board at the high school by contracting with Holyoke Community College and Westfield State University to offer college classes to our students on the NHS campus. This is also part of our SO three spending plan. And you can see here, six sections of college courses that we plan to run at NHS next year. The Introduction to Health Careers aligns with our health care and social assistance innovation pathway that we anticipate opening next year. So in addition to addressing the commitment to greater equity of opportunity contained within the district improvement plan, it also helps us meet the DIP objective of providing more personalized learning options for students. We also plan to continue our contract with CSO to provide additional therapeutic support for elementary students to help address the social emotional needs identified through our mid-winter screening on the SABERS. Finally, I'd ask you to support a goal we've been working toward for a long time. And that is the equalization of building-based budgets on a per pupil basis. The building-based budgets are the non-personnel component of school budgets that principals have the authority to manage with input from their school councils. Starting in FY fifteen, which was the first Northampton budget I worked on, we have added budgets to rationalize the building-based budget on a per pupil basis. As you can see, in FY fourteen, I, there really was no rhyme or reason to how building-based budgets were set up, at least none that I could tell that was based on the size of the school. So in every budget I worked on, I added funds to help bring up some of the lower per pupil schools while holding all schools harmless and trying to get somewhat of an increase each year. This year, we could, which is FY twenty three, I should say, next year, we could finally reach the goal of equalizing budgets across the board. That would be on a two hundred and fifteen dollar per student basis. The amount is slightly lower at Jackson Street. That's because at one time, Jackson Street used its building-based funds to create an additional position. That's because at one time, Jackson Street used its building-based funds to create an additional position. So that amount is reduced to reflect the salary associated with that position. If that position was ever eliminated, then those funds should be returned to Jackson Street, which would bring them up to the two-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. There's another step to this, which is something that I'd like to begin to implement next year. And that would be to deliberately unbalance the building-based budgets, now that we have them balanced, by applying a formula to direct higher levels of funding to schools that serve populations with greater need. So I'll end FY twenty-three first-view budget with that preview of what you can expect in FY twenty-four. Thank you for your attention, and I will stop screen sharing so that we can discuss this proposal.
Okay. Looking for hands and comments. Member Goldman.
Thank you. Thank you Superintendent Provost for that presentation. I really appreciate a lot of the added details that you've put in for this presentation compared to the one that you provided at our budget and property meeting. It's great. One question I have is on slide twenty-four, where you're talking about the JFK reading interventionist. Interventionist, excuse me. I'm wondering if you can talk about JFK's reading intervention position after the point-six FTE and point-eight FTE are moved from JFK to Leeds and Ryan Road respectively. I'm just, if you could just paint the picture of what this budget is proposing for JFK.
So it would be essentially moving all non-special education reading intervention from the middle school to the elementary schools. I think that's supported by some of the results that I showed on the mid-year screening, showing that the students at the middle school have really strong levels of reading achievement. And I think that the students who were not able to support through these positions would still be able to be supported through other support positions we have at the middle school, specifically special education for the most part.
Okay, thank you. Another question I have is, actually, can you, can you just speak to the lift-off learning performance assessment? Is there an assessment process for that? You were talking about eliminating it. Yeah, I'm just wondering.
There is. So the, the providers who are implementing lift-off learning, the private providers we have who are implementing lift-off learning do assessment of students three times over the course of the intervention. They're really looking at a number of math recovery measures that they use for their assessment. The reading component of it is just picked up through our universal screening in the winter, which I share with you the fourth grade example of.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Robbins.
Hi, and thank you, Dr. Provost, for that comprehensive overview. Did raise a couple of questions. I think I mentioned these, a couple of them earlier when we were talking. I always worry when we talk about taking teachers out of a classroom. And I understand that you're addressing class size in saying that we could possibly move teachers to different schools and different positions. I get very worried about the idea of retaining teachers in our district. And especially, I think at the sixth grade, you had said it was possibly a science position, and somehow that would morph into a social studies position. But it all raises a question about enrollment. And I know you addressed this earlier in another presentation. But there's a loss of funding that you did address at that time in terms of what we've lost to charter school expenditures and also a cost to what we spent, what we spend on special education services for school choice students. And I guess I wish that that had been also part of this presentation, because I know that's a moving target and it changes from year to year. But if, if we're challenged by meeting the needs of, for example, students reading at the fourth and sixth grade, I'm curious to know if those are students who are coming from within our district or students who are coming from outside of our district. If we're thinking of cutting back on a team in the sixth grade, I'm curious to know why we are not attracting students to the sixth grade at the middle school or if those numbers just shifted for some other reason. And in addition, I'm going to say again that I think the contract garden position is social and emotional learning. It's as important as anything else we do in school. And when we talk about assessing how kids are doing by giving them the Sabers, I think it's given by teachers in the elementary school and kids themselves take it at the higher grades, which we always have some questions about, about how kids answer self-implemented. How are you doing tests? And I don't know what Sabers costs as an assessment either, but I really wish we could hear more from teachers about how kids are doing this year. So that's such an important piece of data, and I'm missing that from this overview. And I know you have it, but maybe in a future presentation, it could be something that is included in that. I had one more thing. Oh, yeah, the other question was around the special education part. And I know we're making a savings by not doing out-of-district placements, but we have increased the services provided in district. And I wonder if there's a breakdown between what those additional costs are for the in-district provisions and how much of that is really reflected in what we are not sending out of district. So, yeah, sorry, I made a list, and I can send those to you at a future time, but thank you again.
Sure, and I'll just say, many of those questions we can get into when you get the full budget book. Specifically, there is a detailed history on school choice and enrollments within the district. So we can definitely have that. And I can, if you send those questions to me, make sure that we highlight places where you'll find the answers in the budget books.
Member Levy.
Thanks. Apologies if I am a little choppy. I am in a place with poor internet, so please wave or do something to let me know if you can't understand me. I wanted to ask a quick question, Dr. Provost, about one of the last comments you made on the last slide about now that we have, or now that we are getting into a space where we are equally funding schools per pupil, you'd like to see us move to more equitable funding where we are looking at the needs of schools and students. And I'm wondering what, why delay that? Why, why not move towards that sooner? I'm just curious your thoughts.
Sure, because I think that even two-hundred-and-fifteen dollars per student doesn't give principals a lot to work with. And so I would want to use the same process of holding principals or holding buildings harmless to this amount while adding additional funds and using the additional funds to get us to, to a more equitable distribution.
Got it, thanks. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't involve that number lowering for any of the schools. It would go up at some of the schools.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. My other comment is around the absence of anything related to restorative practices in, in this presentation. And I have a hope that, that you might be able to come back next time around with even a small amount of funding for a district-wide initiative that would really allow us as a district to consider what district-wide work and restorative practices would look like. In my mind, that might involve putting together a task force or a committee that involves educators, caregivers, folks from real restorative practitioners to, to really provide a proposal to us about what a district-wide approach would be. Right now, it, it seems very piecemeal. Different schools are doing different approaches, getting trained in different places, have different folks. We have ESPs who have gotten trained, which is fantastic. But I also understand that ESPs are one of our highest turnover areas in the district. So I, I think it would be really helpful if we could have a unified approach as a district, given the amount of commitment we have made or said we have made to restorative practices. So again, I'd love to see, even if it's a small amount of, of funding, I'd like to see some, some kind of approach that would allow a, a group of folks to come together and make a proposal that we could then stand behind, similar to the, the DIP committee, that, that could then be brought to this body.
Yeah, we could definitely do that. I mean, two sources of funding that we could use would be Title II, which is professional development funds. I went over that a little bit in this. And then we could, we do have professional development money written into the ESRS grant. So those are two sources. It's likely that in ten days from now, I'll just be able to identify a sum of money. And the, the full plan will have to follow later, but we can definitely do that.
I appreciate that. And just to be clear, the professional development fund would simply be the pot that the money would be coming from, but we're not talking specifically about professional development yet, because we've got to have a cohesive plan first, right?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Great, thank you.
Member Agnes.
Thank you, Dr. Provost. Being on the other side now, it's very interesting to, to have gone through this process with you. So I appreciate your careful explanation to, for all these parts that are very familiar to me. I have two questions. One, related to Member Levy's in that, wondering how the code of conduct, the new code of conduct rollout has gone and whether that includes some of the need for restorative practices training and/or the second step and how universal that is. I think we talked about it maybe in my first meeting. And I just would like to roll back to thinking about social-emotional learning in schools, especially post-pandemic, or I hope it's post-pandemic. And knowing that we have a new code of conduct that I felt was really, having been on the committee, I felt that it was something that would be proactive and preventative in its nature.
Yeah. So the, the best point of data I have around that have to do with our suspensions and expulsions. As you know, there were many years when, at the elementary level, there were no suspensions or expulsions, even prior to the new code of conduct. But that was not always the case at the secondary level. Last year, the suspensions and expulsions were dramatically down. Now, students were out of school for a lot of that time, so that probably contributed to it. But I'll say this year, my sense is, and you know, we won't know until the final numbers roll up, but the sense is I'm not seeing anything like the number of suspension notices that I used to see at the secondary level. So I think that's a positive point of data. Well, as I said, no, of course, in the summer, when those numbers are finalized for the year. But I can also gather some anecdotal data from the administrators and teachers and kids, if you want.
Great. I, thank you. I have one other question. It's, correct me if I'm wrong, if you said that there's some reallocation of reading services to the elementaries. And I just would like to say, as a former principal, and hoping that there could be more preventative work in learning to read and do numbers, I think that reallocating that is really a positive move and hopefully will show good results in the middle school and high school. So thank you.
You're welcome.
A member Goldman again.
Thank you. Just to follow up on what Member Agnes was just saying. Superintendent Provost, you mentioned concerns about the CPPI grant. And I just want to, again, reiterate my strong support for that program. I've seen it just be so powerful for our students. And when we're talking about reading and math skills and social-emotional skills for our students, it's really, you know, we're talking about starting as young as we can. We know that, that there's so much growth and development and setting the stage for students at such a young age. And so it's important to me that we continue to fund those programs if the CPPI funding doesn't come through. It's, it's, it's so critical, I think. And so we'll see where that lands with the, with the budget. Thank you.
Right, I, I'll just say I agree with your perspective entirely. The reason I said that it was an exposure of, you know, potentially three hundred thousand dollars is because I think the work is critical. You know, I can't imagine that I'll come back to you and say, the state cut the, the grant, so let's not do preschool anymore. I'll, I'll say we have to figure out another solution. But I hope I don't have to do that. You know, I've been monitoring it very closely. There's been some news that's been a little bit more positive recently. So fingers are crossed that hopefully, hopefully we won't have a difficult choice in front of us.
Member Agnes.
Sorry, I forgot one more thing. I know that we talked about, and I think instituted, part of our elementary science curriculum around the gardens and the garden educators. So I'd just like to echo what Member Robbins said, that this is a critical part of how we teach science in the elementary school. So I'm sorry that we probably will have to go back to the PTOs or some, but I can't imagine that not have, well, I can't imagine not having the educator, the garden educator, but I also can't imagine the schools without the gardens.
Okay, I am not seeing any further questions or comments on the first few budgets.
So we usually wrap this up with just sort of a sense of, am I going to have Nick's office go into full production mode over the next ten days to put together books based on these concepts? Or does anyone have any, you know, significant concerns?
Member Goldman.
Thank you. Just in response to the garden coordinator position, I just want to point out that I am the liaison for the general well-being and health committees in the district. And I know that there is a tremendous amount of work, of course, going into the gardening and farm-to-school and all of this. So I am confident that if it comes down to that, we can find a way to sort of find support among some of the other groups. And it was really dialed down during the pandemic. And so now all of those wellness, health and well-being groups are sort of coming back online and getting reorganized and reacquainted with who's who in, in that, this like really great part of the work happening in the district. And so I'm confident that, that that can continue. And I hope to, I'll try to continue to provide announcements and updates about the work going on in that side of things, because we actually don't hear about it often, but it's quite active and there's a lot of people also very concerned about, or, you know, strongly advocating for that aspect of the children's education in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. I assume you, you'd like more of an indication?
I, I think that it's generally positive, but I haven't really heard, like, enough, if you know what I'm saying.
No news is good news.
We can go with that. I like the thumbs up.
Any other members have anything you want to share that the superintendent, oh, there's another thumbs. Okay, go ahead, Member Davis.
I guess I have a point of clarification about what the next steps are then. Then, so if, if your question, the way I heard it was an agreement for you to go forward to make, as I think you said, make the books, may add more data, I guess, that to back up these, this presentation? And then the vote comes after that on the approval of the budget, is that?
That's correct. That's correct. So the, this was about thirty slides. What you would get is a full budget detail, which is about three hundred pages. You get that at the next meeting, I believe that's March tenth. And then the second meeting in March would be the discussion, possible vote for the FY twenty-three budget. If there is a backup date in that, because we do have the April meeting we could go to if we don't pass the budget at the second March meeting, but that meeting is really sort of put there as a, as a hopeful vote for the budget at that time.
So then there is sort of a, the one last chance to say, just a minute there, what about?
Yes.
Okay.
Member Goldman.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I think that's a great question, Member Davis. And I just want to show. Thank you. Yeah, I just, I think that's a great question, member Davis. And I just want to show just to sort of show people, this is the budget book from a couple of years ago, my first year on the term. And you can see there's all of these sections and only the first one is the, um, first view. So the presentation you just saw probably takes up about this much compared to all of the backup data, detail and numbers that, you know, it's probably five or six times. So, and there's detailed per school, per, um, cost account center, each budget. Um, and then some other general information. So it's super comprehensive and, um, actually, and, um, at that time, also Nick will come online and sort of walk us through all of the stages from the budget side. I hope that was helpful.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you for that visual aid. I love it. Member Stein.
Um, this is a, a process question too. Um, uh, I've been stewing on, um, member Levy's suggestion about, um, increasing, um, I think both resources and, uh, investments in, um, you know, uh, restorative justice training and restorative justice practices. And I'm not quite capturing what she said exactly. And I didn't know where that landed in the conversation, if that's something that, um, Dr. Provost is going to try to do, like, you know, so we're not taking a vote and we're not amending anything. I'm just sort of confused where that feedback goes. Um, so yeah, that's, I guess that's my question.
Sure. So if I, if I may, through the chair, um, there's a, you will get in that lengthy document that member Goldman was just displaying, um, detail on professional development. So I didn't really talk about all the different line items and all the different things that would, would be in the budget. So there will be funds for professional development that you'll see in that budget book. And what I was saying is that I would earmark a certain amount of that for restorative practices.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I don't see any further comments, so, um, now, or hold your peace until the next view, but, uh, I think we are saying that please go ahead and, and, um, make the more comprehensive budget based on this presentation. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Okay, moving on to our next item, which is B, this is an update on the superintendent's health advisory council, the SHAC, um, and member Goldman.
Thank you. Um, yes, so, uh, in a previous meeting, member Stein and I were appointed, um, assigned to join the SHAC. And, uh, we've attended one meeting and I've been asked to, um, provide reports back to the committee and the community, during school committee meetings, um, pertaining to the previous meeting since the prior school committee meeting. Um, and, um, although, anyway, so, uh, what I have to update is that, um, you know, of course they're tracking the infection rates and the rates locally and, um, really appreciating that they continue to fall. Uh, also, we're noting that there, um, continues to be a citywide mandate for, for masks and, um, the other COVID 19 mitigation precautions. And so there's no significant change in the district's, um, process at this point, um, except one exciting change is that the educators in the district were, um, informed that they can bring their rugs back into the classrooms. Um, and I've had, I've had a couple of conversations with teachers that are very happy to have their rugs back. So that was good. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Stein, anything you want to add as the other member?
Um, the only thing I'd, I'd add, um, which I, Kai, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong about this, um, but I, I don't think this is, um, privileged in any way, but there was some conversation around, um, a desire to create a certain understanding of the metrics that we're using to make decisions. And I think this is something that was also discussed at the public health meeting on the 17th. So it's a broader sort of community wide, um, uh, effort that the public health director is undertaking. And I'm excited to see how that develops. And I think it could be helpful for us going forward as we are faced with new questions. Um, so yeah, that, that, that would be the only other thing I would add. Um, it's, you know, it's, it's, I think, um, I don't think it's an intimacy, but I think she's trying to wrestle with many things to figure it out. So I was appreciative of that work.
Great. Thank you both for that. Um, there's nothing else on that. Then we're moving on to item C, which is discussion and vote on policy EBCFA, which is face masks and face coverings, um, and member Stein, I will turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for mentioning at the beginning of public comments, what we were doing tonight on this item. So I hope that was helpful for folks, um, tuning in. Um, might seem very boring, given the, the topic, but, um, I, I'm thinking maybe I'll share the, uh, document I made with track changes. So we might be able to look together at what the existing policy is and which changes I'm suggesting. Um, and before I share that, I just say a lot of these changes that I'm suggesting are to update the policy and bring it in line with some of the different things that this committee has done this term, such as appointing two people to SHAC and clarifying the decision-making protocol around COVID policy for the district. Um, and also to sort of, um, take a, a burden off us that I don't think was particularly helpful. So let me share this and I'm really interested to hear your feedback. Um, what other changes you might, you know, really interested to hear what you think. Um, so if you bear with me, I'm going to try to do a screen share of this. Uh, let's see. Hopefully you can see this now.
Yes.
This, okay. I'm trying to fix my view. Um, all right. So the, this, the biggest change you, you'll notice off the bat, there was a paragraph added, I believe in part or in whole in November of 2021, um, to require the North Hampton Public Schools uh, will follow the current DESI guidance unless the superintendent's health advisory committee and/or the city's health department decide to follow modified guidance and provide an explanation to the community. Um, I've eliminated this for a few reasons. One is what I mentioned about the reporting. I've sort of added the superintendent's health advisory committee above with these other, um, sources of guidance that we take into consideration. Um, and I've also clarified the, the responsibility that we took on to do this. The other reason I've eliminated it is because, uh, you know, I think it's a pretty onerous standard. And I, I think we've, we violated it quite frankly, a few times since this was passed. Uh, one was sort of the outdoor masking um, through 1223, which then continued later. And also requiring higher quality masks of students and staff during the Omicron surge. Both of those are not in line with DESI guidance. And I don't think we gave, um, on my reads, provided an explanation to the ambitious community that we were not following that guidance, um, which is the spirit and more or less the letter of this. Um, so what I've done is sort of add something below to just part of that, which this is under, um, types of masks that are acceptable to wear. And what I've added here is just this, you know, if conditions demanded, the superintendent can require higher quality masks, just as example surgical and 95 etc. to ensure the safe operation of North Hampton Public Schools. So this is not something that he would have to send a statement out about, or that he would have to come for approval that, that we've changed some portion of the policy, because I think the decision to do that made a lot of sense. And to make it something that we needed to deal with in a different way, just was, would be overly cumbersome. Um, the, the other change I made, and I may ask Dr. Provost about this. So I've added in to the sentence about disposable face mask coverings being provided to individuals who are visiting, you know, the building. Um, I've added in that the district will supply high quality masks to students and staff who request them and also provide these other face covers. I think we're currently doing this. I know we've been providing them to staff. Um, this, the idea behind this, and I'd love your feedback, is about, um, you know, for students that might not have access to high quality masks, or it may be a burden. If it's something that we as a district can provide to them, um, I think we should, for those who request them, right? That we wouldn't send them home with everybody, but that this would be so, an option for caregivers and students who, who would like that extra level of protection. Um, only other change down here is, uh, half of these links were, were 404 dead. And these pages change quite constantly. So I, I don't know. I don't know if we should keep links in something like this because it changes so fast. Um, and that was it. So that was the sort of the proposals, uh, for changes that I'm making to the policy. Um, I'd love to hear your feedback.
Member Levy.
Thanks so much. Thanks for the proposal, member Stein, and for walking us through the, the proposed changes. I appreciate them, uh, and just have a question. I, I, in the paragraph under types of masks, the second paragraph in that section.
This one here?
Yes. Um, I, I, I guess there may be a time when cloth masks will be effective again, maybe when we get strands that are variants where we know they're effective. But given that we are currently allowing cloth masks, and yet we have data that shows they are not effective. Um, the sentence that says, if conditions demand it, the superintendent can require higher quality masks, blah, blah, blah. Uh, I think, I wonder if we need to have more clarity about what is going, uh, what, what's our, what's our, our trigger point here for when the, when the conditions demand it? Cause I would say the conditions currently demand it, and yet we're not doing that. Perhaps it's because clarity, who is going to help superintendent know when that's the case? Is it the SHAC? Is it us? I hope not, but, but the thoughts on that.
It's a great question. Um, you know, I, I think in the back of my mind, I'm hoping that we'll get a framework that we can tie to this, you know, but this is, that's a maybe and I don't know when. So I, yeah, I, I take your point. I think it's a, a very good one. Um, I mean, currently I think it would be the, the guidance of SHAC, um, that would help him make this decision, which I think is what helped him make the decision um, earlier in the surge. But, um, I do think it would be helpful to have a better idea about what those conditions are. Um, I'm not sure how to frame that right now. I'd be more than happy for suggestions.
Yeah, perhaps there needs to be something in here that names the SHAC as the committee that will be advising about the conditions demanding it. Uh, but I guess I also just want to raise this as something for you and member Goldman to potentially bring back to the shop as to why it is we're allowing cloth masks right now. I mean,
Yeah, I'd be happy to bring it back to the next meeting too.
Member Levy, we're kind of losing you.
Thank you for telling me.
You're welcome.
Know what to do about that.
And we got most of it, but towards the end you sort of froze. Um, and now you're frozen right now. Okay. I'm going to move on to member Goldman, but if you have more things to say, let me know. Okay. Member Goldman.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mike, for bringing, uh, member Stein, for bringing this, uh, to the committee. I just think it's helpful to have it in front of everyone, even, uh, regardless of the changes. And these changes are good. Um, one, I just have a couple of quick points. Um, I have some tiny grammatical pieces, not, um, that I don't think I need to be here, but one thing that was confusing for me was in the, um, right there, this, uh, nearly last paragraph, if students are in violation of this policy, and I know you didn't make a change here, but I don't understand, um, the student may be removed from the school building for in-person learning. That's confusing to me, this, uh, the fourth line of that. So if students are in violation of this policy, the building principal will consult with the caregivers or with parent guardians to determine whether an exception is appropriate, or the student may be removed from the school building for in-person learning. Should it be remote learning?
It's a great question. I think this was probably drafted at a time where there was in-person or hybrid or a choice. So it ma, it may makes, like, you know, now the district's not allowed.
Alternative.
Yeah. Um,
Um, Superintendent Provost, could you chime in on sort of what would be the next step if a student is in violation of the policy and needs to, and may be removed from the school? Would that happen?
Sure. Uh, we, I guess the reason that I'm pausing here is because we just had a discussion about restorative practices and the desire to not remove students from schools. Um, so I, I am a little uncomfortable with language around removing students from the building. Um, unless there is a substantial disruption to the learning environment or a health hazard. That hasn't been the case, except in my recollection, one student who just simply refused to wear a mask and would not under any circumstances. So, um,
So maybe, oh, go ahead.
I think maybe just leave, put the period after removed from the school. It's a maybe it not a, a must be removed from the school.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and then it, then eliminates this language that is a little bit confusing.
Right. I mean, it could be determine whether an exception is appropriate. Uh, if the student needs to be removed from the school, or if other accommodations need to be made, you know, to protect the safety of all stakeholders, right?
Do you want to say that again, Kai? Cause I, I'd take that as a friendly amendment if.
Okay. I would like to make a friendly amendment to the motion on the table. So this, uh, would say if students are in violation of this policy, the building principal will consult with the parents, guardians to determine whether an exception is appropriate, comma, if the student need be removed from the school, comma, or other accommodations need to be put in place to protect all stakeholders, or just put in place. Something like that. It's fine. Yeah. And then that next part would all be eliminated.
Do we need two Ms. here?
Please.
Okay. And one C or two Cs? It's one of these words with double.
You've got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, and then at the top, under types of masks, I would just say, instead of saying all students in grades pre-K through 12th will be, would just say are, because they are. That's what this policy is saying. Uh, as long as, um, because this policy says that the following are requirements that are in place until further notice. And so all statements should be, um, uh, present.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Robbins.
Um, yeah, I actually wonder why, thank you. I wonder why we're actually having language about violations. And maybe we do need to have something really intense on this, but we do have a code of conduct. And I don't know whether the code of conduct could simply be what we operate under, or if this is such a serious um, and egregious item, that if someone comes in and won't wear a mask, we need to have a, a bunch of different rationales in here for why that student wouldn't be in the classroom. But I also noticed that, um, this is addressed to students, but we're this is addressed to students, but we're also talking about people who are visiting the school and staff, and maybe we need to say that more directly at the top of it. But I will say, I find this very encouraging to be thinking forward about a Plan B and a Plan C about how we handle the future, rather than just reacting to it and having something in place that we move forward. We move forward with now, and we can call back to it at that time. So my primary question is, does the code of conduct just cover all this stuff? And do we need to be, talk about violations? And the whole idea of removing students from school makes me just shudder. And then how does this apply more directly to other people who are within the school? Thank you.
Remember Robbins, did you, was there a spot at the top with, do you have an idea where we could maybe make it clear that we're talking about not just students and you know, staff and faculty, but that we're talking about visitors too? Like, is there a way you, you think we should include that?
Yeah, just say it.
Okay, like is at the front end, like.
I, I can't do, I can't do the word smithing. I'm just saying it's not in there. So if you want to address this and someone was going to pick it apart, I might say, you talking to me? So I would just say, say what it is you need to say, and then say it very clearly. But if it does say at the bottom, it does say that it addresses visitors to school and something else I think that's in there, visitors in violation of the policy, but does it also apply to staff? Does it apply to? You know, it's just say whatever it is you want to say and be really clear about it. The clearer, the simpler, the better, eh?
Dr. Provost, did you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something. The current stance of this district is that cloth masks are not allowed. I do know there was a situation at a school where there was a miscommunication about that, but that had to be corrected, but right now we're not cloth masks.
Thank you. Member Miller.
I just have several questions about, some is wording. I'm back to the paragraph of if students are in violation of this policy. The building will consult with the parent to discover whether an exception is appropriate. Of course, I don't understand that, what that means. And then it should, it actually should be whether an exception is appropriate, or if the student needs to be removed from the school, which I also disagree with, or other accommodations, or do other accommodations need to be put in place? I I guess the only piece I wonder about is not just the building principal will consult with the parent, perhaps, or other staff, because, for example, I imagine a kid on the autism spectrum coming into school and refusing to put on a mask. And maybe other personnel need to be involved to talk with the student about this before this, you know, that it may just need other people besides the principal and the parent guardian.
Would you, um, I would take that as a friendly amendment. If you have, if you could just walk me through how you'd like, how you think that would best be added here, that would be great.
Okay, well, that's my other question is, do you want us to do this right now in meeting? Like, should we edit it all right now? Or do you want, yes, okay?
Unfortunately, we have, we have to do it this way.
Okay, okay.
I mean, it's fortunate that the public sees, but it's unfortunate in that it's a difficult way to collaborate on Zoom in real time like this.
I guess I just say the building principal or other necessary staff.
I'm not sure. I don't understand that necessary staff piece.
Oh, you know what?
The amendment I made.
I guess I was thinking not, you're right, not with, it's not necessary staff with talking to the parent so much as with the student. So you're right, you're right. I agree with.
I'll roll that one back.
So take, scroll that back, take that out, and then. Or whether other accommodations need to be. Not do other.
So, or, so here it would be, or whether.
Instead of do, I'd say whether.
I actually think you can go without the whether and the the first if, if you want, if we're looking for it to be slimmed down. If, if you're adding that first or after appropriate, then I don't think you need the if. And then you wouldn't need that whether either, right? It would be to determine whether an exception is appropriate, the student needs to be removed from the school, or other accommodations need to be put in place.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and you get rid of the if after appropriate or if. Yeah, that's the if I put in that isn't grammatically correct. And that would be, and you don't need that or either, because you're making a list of three, and the or can just be at the end. So the, where the cursor is, now you just delete that or.
Okay.
Thank you. And that dash, of course.
Yeah, I think that's just to kill the space. I think.
Okay, great. So there's, there, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just to eliminate the space.
Here, yeah.
I, I wanted to just go back to member Robbins' comment about describing who the policy applies to. And I had an idea about where to put that in. So I'm thinking maybe here, something like this. This policy applies to all students, staff, and visitors. Just to describe who it, who it applies to. It could go elsewhere, but it seems maybe like.
That's a good place for it.
Best place.
Do you want me to move on to another question? Remember something, I can't see you actually, remember something?
Oh, sorry, I, am I, I look like I'm here.
No, you're here. It's, I, since your screen sharing, I have a limited window and you got bumped off of it.
Gotcha. Yeah, no, I had seen that member Davis's hand has been up.
Okay, member Davis.
Hi, um, one thing I just, I noticed towards the bottom, there was mention of staff. In the violations category, violations of this policy by staff will be handled in the same manner. So that, that piece was mentioned, so I don't know if then that starts to be redundant, if it's above as well, or maybe it's, should be down there. And then the other thing was, I guess two things. One is, did we agree? Can we take out cloth masks, or should we leave that in? Do you know what I mean? Up, up above. And also, and also, my last thing is, I've been wondering globally, not just about this, but just that maybe it belongs in here or not. Or in some further discussion, but like about what that metric, you know, use, to use the lingo that's being used now, the metric of if the masks get put away, what's our measure of if and when they need to be brought back? Do you know what I mean of? I know that's under discussion in a lot of places of kind of the fluidity of the situation and feeling comfortable if the numbers get over X. Everybody will know, well, now we're going to be doing this again, and these are the kind of masks required, or how. Again, I don't know if that belongs here. But it's something that I've been thinking about that having everything as clear and as straightforward as possible helps everybody. So.
Yeah, I really appreciate those suggestions a lot. From my perspective, the, you know, I think when this was originally written, the committee at the time and the conversations at the time embraced cloth masks for a number of reasons. It's certainly a question we could take up if we don't want to allow cloth masks. I think it could be difficult for the community to get used to that change, but it is a question we could talk about. I, I do also wonder about. I, I think I'm hopeful that we'll get some metrics exactly as you described, member Davis, where we would know. Okay, here's where we are. Here's where we are now. The metrics have changed, so the masks come off or the masks come back on. And I think once we get those, we could certainly come back to this and make that edit there now. I just, I don't know how to do it without that that knowledge, you know, without having that from the city officials for us to consider. I, I wanted to ask you to, you mentioned the violations of this policy by staff, and it seems like a lot of members are uncomfortable with the removal for school, so I'm wondering if there is a sense that we want to take that out. And there was a question, I think, member Robbins raised about whether or not the code of conduct just covered this, which I do not know the answer to, but it seems like the way we talk about violations here for staff is, you know, the same manner, like, I don't, I don't actually know what that means. I don't know what our policy is for how to handle staff that violate school committee policy. I don't know if that is a, something that's in the collective bargaining agreement, or there's a different code of conduct, but I guess my, my suggestion is that maybe we go one direction or the other. Or maybe someone else has a better idea. Maybe we just, if people do not like this sort of language, which I, I am sympathetic to, is it enough for us to say the code of conduct can handle this specific situation? And if so, should we just change it to mirror more or less this sentence, or, or not?
Dr. Provost, are you, are you able to answer any of those questions about policies or at the, off the top of your head?
Yeah, I would say the, there's nothing on point to masking in the code of conduct, so if the committee wants to make failure to wear a mask a separate punishable offense, then it should be included in this policy and not just handled under the code of conduct.
Thank you.
Other questions? I, I thought that was the big one.
I think that was.
Yeah.
Okay, member Agna.
Mine isn't a big one, but I thought we were using caregivers instead of parent guardians. So I was just wondering about whether we could apply that practice to this as well. That's all. Thank you.
It's a good little one. Member Daisy.
If we're not using cloth masks now, then why do we have mention of it? I think the science is stronger about the more protective masks. So should we take out the cloth math, mask part?
Okay, questions on? Or, um, member Goldman?
Thank you. I just need a clarification. Member Levy, I think that this is something you were referring to about cloth masks. This is, this is saying there's disposable masks, or there's cloth masks, and we might need surgical or N95, but I think the, the distinction about types of masks here is that some types of masks, there are disposable masks that are not surgical or N95s, and there are cloth masks that aren't surgical or N95s, but there are also high-quality masks that are not disposable. There are high-quality masks that are reusable. So I am apprehensive about removing the term cloth because I think cloth masks can be, you know, a bandana, which we are not interested in, to like an Enro mask or a Happy mask, which are reusable, high-quality masks. And Superintendent Provost, perhaps you have a some, a way of clarifying that as well. So I'm not in favor of removing cloth, but maybe what we're looking for is adding some language that talks about like three layers or some other qualifier.
I guess I would just point out that the acceptable mask paragraph being separated from the exception paragraph creates a little bit of a problem for implementation because one of the exceptions that we have is use of a cloth mask for some students who can't wear other kinds of masks. So, you know, I, I would. I, I'm just pointing out as a problem. So, um, one question for Superintendent Provost. Are you, if I heard you right, are you suggesting that we should combine the types of masks paragraph with the violation paragraph in some way, or should we make note that there are? I guess if we, I guess if we were to say something about, change something about the cloth masks, we might want to mention that there's accommodations where they're appropriate. Would, would that sort of resolve the the concern?
Yeah, I, I think that whenever we're talking about a policy that is potentially going to limit access to the educational program, we have to make sure that we're not limiting access on the basis of a disabling condition. If we're going to say that these are the only masks allowed, it's important to say that there could be exceptions, you know, if, if a student had a disability, that a different type of mask might be allowed, even if it's not listed in this paragraph.
And do you think that that should, that, that caveat should go in the types of masks paragraph or in the violate? Like, where would you think it would be best?
I would say here, because as you're, as I'm reading this, one thing I might, you know, I might reasonably conclude is that there are no exceptions.
Right, based this language, right?
Yeah.
Right. So if this changed and was more restrictive, you think that would? Right, right now you think it's okay, right? Is that right?
Right, I think if you, if you took out the possibility of wearing a cloth mask, then you have to put in some language that continues to allow it for kids to need cloth masks as an accommodation.
Gotcha. And member Goldman, did you have a suggestion on language around the cloth masks, or do you not feel strongly on changing that, adding it, or, or?
I actually, I don't think it needs to be changed. I'm comfortable with where it's at. And I also even in question a little bit the like, if conditions demand it, the superintendent can require higher quality masks, because I think that language is more troublesome than the others, though I'm also fine with not changing that. Maybe something that would create some clarity is at the top, it says types of masks. You have a headline for types of masks, but then you start talking about something that isn't types of masks. So then actually, it would be like two paragraphs of types of masks. And then just where it says if students are in violation, actually you would put a section in there saying, you know, a protocol for violations of this policy. And then the next three paragraphs address violations of this policy for students, teachers and visitors, right?
Yeah, could you, um, yes, I think that's a very good suggestion. Can you just walk me through where you think if we should make a change to the types of masks as a heading? Because this first one is sort of not talking about that. Or do you think we should just drop this down and put that heading above types of masks?
Drop what down and put what where?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That wasn't quite.
So the way I heard you was that it would be better if we aligned the headings more clearly and that having types of masks here and then it's followed not by types of masks. Right, we have this thing about high quality masks.
But that is, that part is, uh, right, so you could put types of, I mean, you could, you maybe not meet you, where you have types of masks right now is not, should either go one paragraph down? I mean, this is really getting into some detail then. I'm concerned about the, the value of getting into this kind of detail. You could just delete that types of masks, just delete that. And then there's not as much clarity, but there's more consistency. If you want more clarity as well, you would move types of masks from there and put it below that. Yep, you put it right there. And then two paragraphs down, you would add a header just above if students are in violation of this policy that would say protocol for violations of this policy, I suppose. And then you could even have the first paragraph start with students and the next one start with staff and the last one start with visitors or bold those words, you know? I am someone who is quite meticulous with this sort of thing and have been given some, a fair amount of constructive criticism for being so. So I'm trying not to overdo it.
Member Robbins, did you, I saw you raise both hands. Did you have slain?
Yeah, thank you. Yes. And I'd raise the other one, but I can't.
Oh, I know.
So, yeah, I, I really appreciate this conversation. And Member Goldman, I absolutely appreciate your meticulousness in the wording. And I think it's really important to have this be as clear as it possibly can, written not in the heat of the moment and not when there are strong feelings, one way or the other, which we certainly know we've haven't experienced in the past. And I'm just wondering whether it's possible to send this back to you and to Member Stein to finish what seems like a really good, strong redraft of this and checking it with the superintendent in terms of legality and bring it back to us at the next meeting as a final draft or next to final draft.
I, just in response, I'm not in favor of that. I think that this is very well crafted and worked through. And more important than really getting these like grainy pieces is to make sure that we're talking about. Everyone's hearing about it. I think that the exposure is more important. But I appreciate, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just say, I feel unless I'm missing something, I think everybody, nobody has objected to the larger pieces of this. People have, have pretty much said what they think. And at this point, it really is about how does it best read? And you are very good at putting that together. So unless I'm missing something about folks needing to know more about what should be in there, it might really well be ready for that redrafting by the two of you. That was what I was suggesting. Thank you.
Member, Member Levy.
Thanks. I, we actually have a rules and policy subcommittee whose role is to redraft our policies that need to be addressed. And so I actually would like to put a motion on the table to refer this policy back to the rules and policy subcommittee to do the work that Member Robbins just suggested. I think our doing this all together, it, it's, it's not the best use of our time. And I, I, I agree with Member Robbins that folks have sort of said the big pieces. So it's got to go to that committee if any changes are going to be made to it. So I'm putting a motion on this table to refer it to the rules and policy subcommittee.
Thank you, Member Levy. Motion, sorry, I can't see everyone. So shout out a second if there's a second.
Is the motion to refer this?
Motion to refer
Okay, thank you.
Sort of these friendly amendments in here to the rules and policy subcommittee. And I missed who the second was. Member Davis?
Amy Davis, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion on referring this? I don't think I see any hands. So, any roll call please?
I'm Gazy.
Uh, yes.
Do we have a member Seraphie Cox here yet? I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Member Stein.
Uh, yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Skiar.
Yes.
And Member Robbins.
Yes, thank you.
I'll happily pass this over to that committee. I'll save this and send it along.
Excellent.
And CC Annie, so she has it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we are at item D, discussion and possible vote concerning scheduling, posting, recording and retaining records of subcommittees. I'm going to try and encapsulate this and then ask for a motion. There's some question regarding scheduling, posting, recording and retaining records of subcommittee meetings, which have been done by the school committee clerk and secretary, Annie Thompson. There's a question whether the clerk of the school committee needs to be the clerk for the scheduling, all of those things, posting, recording, retaining of the records of subcommittees, or whether a member of the subcommittee can be assigned to do so. There's some ambiguity in the rules as well as policy BDE, which is on subcommittees, which states, quote, "Subcommittees shall create and maintain accurate minutes of all meetings, including executive sessions, setting forth the date, time and place. The members present or absent a summary of discussions made and actions taken at each meeting, including the record of all votes in accordance with Mass General Law 30A, Section 22." That's Mass General Law on taking of minutes or how minutes have to be done. There's also policy BDB on a school committee officers, which states that the clerk, under clerk, the clerk will keep or cause to be kept an accurate journal of all committee meetings, will comply with state law and committee policy regarding notification of meetings and will render such reports as may be required by the state or the town or a city. But I'm with that slide, end quote. And references, that also references Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 36, which is, quote, "The school committee shall appoint a secretary who shall keep a permanent record book in which all its votes, orders and proceedings shall be recorded," end quote. Additionally, there's policy BEDG on minutes, which says, quote, the minutes, and there's more in these policies. I'm just sort of pulling out the more salient points. The minutes of a school committee meeting constitute the written record of committee actions. They are legal evidence of what action was. Therefore, the secretary of the school committee will be responsible for reporting in the minutes all actions taken by the committee. And so there is some suggestion, so there's some question around this. There's been some suggestion from our legal counsel that all of this could use some clarification. So as you know, and as we were just sort of talking about before, the school committee rules have already been referred to the rules and policy subcommittee for review. So if there's an interest in also looking at these further relevant policies, they could also be referred to the committee. But in the meantime, the question is whether the current practice be continued as the clerk slash secretary of the school committee is responsible for ensuring compliance with Mass General Law, open meeting law, the local charter rules and, and our policies. So that's sort of my encapsulation of this. And, and I will go, excuse me, to Member Robbins.
Thank you, and I'm, I will make a motion and that is to refer it to the rules and policy committee. We do have a meeting come up very shortly and we have not yet met as a group, but we could make that a priority.
Great, so that's a motion to, is it to refer to the rules that are already there, but additionally BD, what I've, I found BDE, BDB and BEDG.
Right, there's a lot of history to lots of things that have had rules and policies made out of them in that, in those documents, all of which need to be revisited. But for everything that's pertinent, and you might send us a note about each one that you have, but I think I've got them as well. My motion is to refer those back to rules and policy to clarify and bring back to the larger group what our practice should be.
Second.
Okay, that was made by Member Robbins, seconded by Member Stein. Any further discussion on that? Um, okay, so they have been referred. And then the other piece of information that we're looking for is what we do in the meantime. So while those are being looked at and potentially revised, do we keep with the current practice, which is that Annie attends all meetings and is the person who takes the minutes of meetings? All right, I'm not seeing anyone objecting to doing that. So I guess we, so we will stay with our current practice while those are all being looked at. Okay, excellent. Um, so roll call please on the motion, Annie.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller. I think you're muted, Member Miller.
Muted, Member Miller.
Yes. Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Skiar.
Yes.
Member Robbins.
Yep.
And Member Gazy.
Yes.
Okay, those are all headed over to rules and policy. Thank you very much. Uh, item E, vote to authorize the vice chair to issue a statement regarding statements that have been made labeling learners. And I will hand this over to the vice chair, Member Agna.
Thank you. I will read, and if you need, I can bring it up also as a, if we need to do some friendly amending. I'm happy to do that. So I submit the following statement as the vice chair of the school committee for your consideration with the acknowledgement of Member Stein's clarification of the language that he used, which he did so in the moment in the meeting and also in his op ed piece in the Gazette. In addition, I have addressed the students in the Northampton schools believing in the power of apology in the process of healing. So on behalf of the Northampton School Committee, we want the children of our city to know that no one on the committee believes that there are first and second class students at the high school or at any other school. These labels are not in keeping with our beliefs and we apologize to the students, educators and caregivers for the use of them. We hold the stated mission of the Northampton Public Schools in our hearts and minds, which are to build communities of engaged students, enable students to reach their potential, nurture kindness, empathy and tolerance. We live in times where respectful dialogue is often difficult to establish. We honor our fine educators' expertise and experience while supporting an open and safe discourse with those responsible for the teaching and learning of our children. There is nothing more important than our public schools in maintaining our democracy. Our job as the school committee is to promote a collaborative environment for all in the best interests of the children of Northampton. In our efforts to do this, it is essential that we ask questions considering we consider various perspectives and engage in a rigorous dialogue. Please know that questioning is not a sign of disrespect or doubt. Our curiosity is an indication that we are trying to do the difficult but essential work of moving us as a district toward policies and practices that yield the best possible outcomes for our students. When we do this, we always try to do our best. Like all human beings, we will make mistakes. When we make mistakes, we will apologize and promise to do better the next time. And there will be a next time. We will continue to make mistakes and we will continue to strive to do our best. This is what is necessary for us to engage in this essential dialogue to move the work of our district forward. We, as elected representatives, pledge to work to restore trust among all stakeholders in our community and act as role models for our children this time and every time. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Agna. Um, Member Stein.
Thank you. I, I also have a statement. But before I begin, I want to thank Member Agna for some of the changes to the original letter that had been posted for the meeting and also for the preamble. I appreciate that. To be the victim of a public shaming campaign by NHS educators and administrators is not something I anticipated when I ran for office. Unfortunately, we live in a moment where sensationalizing and decontextualizing the comments of officials and individuals is common practice. In sprawling four to six hour meetings, it would be surprising if elected officials didn't occasionally speak indelicately or use words or phrases in the moment that they would choose differently. Rather than sensationalize these moments, it would be far more productive to give members the benefit of the doubt and extend some grace to those who choose to serve in office. It is unfortunate that signatories of the Gazette op ed titled, "Northampton High School Educators Describing Students as First and Second Class Learners is Harmful", did not offer me such consideration. For anyone genuinely offended by my poor choice of words at that moment, I'm truly sorry. I hope you have had the opportunity to read my op ed and welcome you to reach out to me directly. It is unfortunate that my comments have been used to create a distraction from the important business of this committee. I believe it was clear in the moment and absolutely clear in my subsequent email, which was published as an op ed, that I do not believe that there are first and second class learners in our schools and that I was not describing them that way. I was questioning if tracking produces that feeling in students, particularly if they are in the same class as it did for me as a student. By ignoring this, the signatories entirely disregard my lived experience. As I was quoted in the Gazette article, "I believe the signatories are acting disingenuously in their attacks on me and in their demand that the school committee issue an apology for my comments. During this term, members of the same group have come not in the spirit of collaboration, but rather condemnation, accusing this body of disrespecting teachers for simply proposing the creation of a curriculum committee, something common in most districts as well as our own for many years. The message was clear. They do not see us, the school committee, as partners in this areas. In deliberation, another section of a meeting, Mr. Mead accused the committee, with no evidence offered, of treating the math department unfairly. Similarly, Principal Valencourt stated that she did not want to go down the rabbit hole about math. Given what has come to light in former Member Voss's public record request, it's no wonder that she does not want the committee to actually discuss that piece of the curriculum, despite the fact that she was asking us to vote on it. The statement issued by the signatories largely ignored the points made in my clarifying remarks, choosing instead to offer an incredibly ungenerous interpretation of my words and weaponize it publicly. While the signatory statement was, was hurtful, the original draft letter of apology was also. In capitulating to this group's demands for an apology, the school committee is endorsing the signatories portrayal of my comments and joining them in demonizing a member of this committee. Given some of the kind words and encouragement I had heard, I had expected some solidarity from this committee. But apparently it is much more expedient to throw me under the bus in order to move on, rather than address or even acknowledge some of the problematic behavior that brought us to this place. The apology letter states, quote, "We honor our fine educators' expertise and experience while supporting an open and safe discourse with those responsible for the teaching and learning of our children," end quote. Yet it fails to mention that I was the one who lived these values. I was the one who extended my hand to some of the signatories and others and explained my remarks in order to set their concerns to rest and offered an avenue and explained my remarks in order to set their concerns to rest and offered an avenue of restorative justice. I even asked them to share it widely amongst any staff or faculty who were upset. Rather than accept my invitation, they chose to write their statement and bring their grievance to the press to publicly shame me. Where is the sentence in this statement condemning this behavior and calling on employees of the district to live by the values we espouse and the practices we aim to hold our students to? This is a moment to actually show leadership and live these values by calling in those who flaunt them, not capitulate to their demands for political expediency. What example do we want to send to our students? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Um, is there a motion? Member Davis?
Um, I have multiple things that I want to say. I'm not sure the appropriate way to say them. I'm not sure what the is the is the motion in question to accept this statement as written by um, member Agna? Is that what the motion is?
So the the agenda item is vote to authorize member Agna to issue the statement. Um, and then once it's on the floor, if we wanted to offer amendments, we certainly could.
Okay. Because I guess I guess some of my comments have to do with changes or whatever to this statement. So I guess that would come in the discussion after.
Yes, but let's put it on the floor to then have the discussion. If you want to discuss the statement, then we should put it on the floor.
Uh, so then I should the motion's been made, yes?
No.
No. Um, what's proper phrase? And I make a motion to?
Uh, to authorize the vice chair to issue the statement.
To authorize um, and issue the statement written by member Agna.
Second.
Seconded by member Goldman. Um, do member Davis, you you still have the floor if you'd like to make comments?
Um, I I think I have a few things, but I'll just start with the one that's top of mind. Um, um, and that was kind of just a little discussion. I'm wondering, um, with the idea of what the apology is for of the original request, which member Stein had mentioned, like, is it appropriate to apologize for something that was already apologized for when he he sort of already did? If we as a body apologize for something that was stated by one person and yet acting as a group, what the appropriate thing to do is? Um, it's sort of, um, I'm just putting that out there as something that I've been wrestling with as we, um, we're a group. Like, we're not just all just individuals, like, we're supposed to be acting as a group. Um, and yet, um, a a lot of what I'm I'm thinking, I'm not positive what some of the apology with what was being sought. Was it an apology for the statement, um, of the first class and second class student statement or because we as a body did not, um, jump in and uh, say something at that time? I, speaking for myself, I know exactly that moment of why I did or did not say something. But I don't know, I've been wondering, are we supposed to be rehashing that moment? Are we supposed to be voting on the apology? I'm not sure if I'm making sense here. I know exactly why I didn't say anything and that's because um, Prince uh, Principal Valencourt said what I was thinking. And I said, "The meeting's already very long. I don't need to repeat what she said." She she said, "Hey, let's not call names." That's what I was thinking, so I didn't say anything. And yet we were all lumped into, why didn't we say anything? Without anybody asking us why. It was just assumed. So, um, it made me wonder. I I don't, I'm I'm just putting all that out there. And this was a lot for all of us to wrestle with, I believe. And it made me wonder, what's the the best way to move on from this with everybody feeling whole? I'll just stop there for now. I'm not sure if I'm making my point.
Uh, member Robbins.
Thank you, member Davis. And and your confusion is certainly something that is probably felt by others. And I'll make my own interpretation about apologies. And I bet you, member Davis, that you do this every day with your second graders. Um, which is the idea that um, we do as I thought that member Agna's statement was really perfect and we do make mistakes. All of us do. We're in a public meeting. We're always going to say stuff and go whoops. And um, we hope that we will always have a chance to be able to say, "Let me rethink that," um, to learn from each other, to do it differently next time. And I'm a big fan of apologies. I think there's nothing wrong with grace. There's nothing wrong with taking a step backwards and saying, "That was a bad moment. Let's, everybody rethink it. Let's do it differently next time." Um, it was very unfortunate that that fell in a public way on a member of our committee. And I think we've learned, um, I hope we've learned. I hope everybody here, people who are listening or attending have learned that when we do have an issue with one another, we have something you take exception to. Um, we go to that person first and we have a conversation and we and we listen with an open mind and we walk away thinking about things differently. Um, and we hold on to that. And I love our committee. I think we're a great group of people. I'm really proud to be working with a Northampton public school teacher, so I think are extraordinary. And I'm hoping that this is a blip in time and it has been a lesson learned, but I wholeheartedly support this statement as it is written. Um, I think it's really a gorgeous piece of text. And I guess my recommendation of the committee is um, to take that little bit of leap in faith and not worry about, how does this reflect on me? How does this reflect on um, whether I'm meeting this demand or doing that? It's just humans to humans and we are, I know we're all about the kids. Um, so my recommendation is, let's do it.
You, uh, member Goldman. Oh, member Goldman's hands is down, sorry. Uh, member Miller.
Um, I wanna, well, first I would like to make a motion to accept and uh, vote to authorize the vice chair to issue the statement regarding statements that have been labeling learners. And with it, I will say, I would, I my motion is to accept it with that introduction um, that member Agna read tonight. And I want to say that I, the part I agreed with the most was that we all make mistakes. And in, when we're on the spot in this position, speaking on Zoom, we all say things in a way that we might regret later. And I think we need to give each other a break and take a moment and let the person do what member Stein did, which is apologize. The only thing we can do when we say things we didn't mean to say it that way is to apologize, own it, which he did, and move on and correct our past mistakes because we're all going to make them. So I just think that we need to give each other a little bit of a break here and recognize that that was, as member Stein said, eh, he didn't mean it that way. That's, it came out wrong. I, I, in the moment, I kind of knew what he was trying to say, although he worded it in a way he regretted. And I, so my motion is to, um,
There's our, I'm sorry, member Miller, there's already a a motion on the floor. The motion's already been made.
Yes, it's to vote to authorize the vice chair to issue the statement including the introduction regarding statements that have been made labeling learners.
So you could offer an amendment? Okay. A friendly amendment to member Agna?
Yes, um, I I said regarding the one she read tonight with the introduction.
Okay, looks like she accepts that friendly amendment. Um, member Goldman.
Thank you. Um, I uh, really appreciate the committee coming together to write this letter and I think it is beautifully written. Um, I particularly appreciate the part in the first paragraph that says we apologize. Um, I also would like to apologize for, um, this misstep uh, by a member of our committee and, um, I am having a difficult time with this um, apology because uh, I'm a little confused, Mike, about uh, member Stein, about your statement that you just offered now and it doesn't feel like you're sorry, actually, um, in reading that statement. And so I was wondering if you could please uh, confirm uh, and apologize or not. I I'm just wondering, I'm feeling like I deeply want to apologize. I think it is appropriate for the committee to apologize. This is not out of place for us to apologize for this. And uh, since you chose to make a statement, I'm actually asking you to be a little more clear about your stance because your 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 statement after the committee's offering this letter of apology sounds like you're not sorry.
Um, member Stein, would would you like to respond since I was directed at you?
Sure, um, only to say that in the minutes, you can read the statement and you know, different textual interpretations may vary. I was pretty clear in what I said, that to anyone who was genuinely offended by my comments, I was truly sorry and that I find the people that are making a demand for an apology to be disingenuous for the reasons I laid out and for the fact that they did not pursue the values of the district. And that's where we disagree. Um, and we can disagree. Um, so yeah, if if folks are genuinely offended by what I said and the way they heard it, I'm sorry. I apologize, but I feel like um, what, the way in which the individuals drafted this statement went about it and the apology they demanded um, came from a very disingenuous place. And I've explained why. And when we can disagree, and that's that's honestly all I have to say about it. This committee can authorize this letter to go out um, without the things that I mentioned being in it. I can't support it and that's okay. Um, you all have to vote in the way you think the committee should act and we can disagree about that. Um, it's me and my reputation and my particular interests around this um, that are different than all of yours. So I understand your perspectives, but I'm asking you to understand mine as well. Thank you.
I'm, I I'm asking, I think when you say for people who are genuinely offended, I wonder when you consider the statement you made, what people you have in mind who are not genuinely offended by that? We all understand, Mike. I myself have made statements where I have received messages that I spoke out of turn, that I used the wrong language and I was able to, uh, with the support of my colleagues, move through that shame. And I'm not, I don't want you to feel shame, but I'm, I definitely do not. But I'm not understanding how, uh, someone might not be like, do you find it knowing that it, you didn't, you didn't mean it the way it's been interpreted, that saying that is not offensive? I guess I just, I have difficulty.
The chair.
I support this letter and I have difficulty with it without you joining us. I'm I'm really struggling with you not being included because it is the case that we are one committee with one voice and we stand before, we stand before our statements to the public. And I, in particular, support making this apology. I think it's important and appropriate. And I just, I really want to take some time to unders- understand better. I just, I don't quite understand. And I know you say you've made these statements. And so that's why I'm asking a refining question, not about these people who are are making a distraction or create, making you the victim, but really about the statement being offensive or not. And, um, and that's what I'm asking of you. And I see there are other hands and so I, um, and I would like you to respond though, please.
You certainly may respond if you'd like to.
Can you restate the specific question?
Is is it not a is it, is it the case that what you said might, might not be offensive? Like you're saying, only genuinely offensive, but I don't understand what you mean by people who are generally offended. Do you find a statement possibly not offensive?
Yes, I think that there is um, a body of literature around tracking um, that talks about negative effects. And I also think that we use terms to qualify things all the time. First and second class, you may not like them, but you know, if you go to the cafeteria, you're going to see many classifications on what we get. You're going to find many labels throughout the school, whether it's English language learners, et cetera. I think that had I said that there are second class learners, instead of asking about, do students feel like they are second class learners when they're given a different rubric from someone else next to them? I think that's a very different thing. I'm not suggesting there's a second classer. I'm not suggesting that all of our kids are are not worthy of our all of our attentions and don't have all the limited, you know, unlimited potential that they can have. I I think it's clear what I meant. Um, I think my explanation made sense. I think we can say that it's never okay to use um, that phrase. And like I said, yeah, I would have picked a different phrase. I apologize to people that are offended about it and I wouldn't use it again. Right? But I am also don't believe that the people that made the demand for this apology were actually offended by my statement for reasons why I can, I cannot discuss because we've been advised by council not to discuss. So I I I can't say why I feel that way in a public meeting. Um, I have reason to feel that way. And I, that's how, that's how I view it. Um, part of the reason why I explained it was because I I reached out to them. I offered an explanation. I offered restorative justice and they completely ignored it. That seems very disingenuous to me. That doesn't seem, that's how I read it. You can interpret it differently. This is my perspective. I understand it's subjective and we can disagree. Um, but that's how I see it. Um, so, yeah, I, would I use a different word? Absolutely. It's a horrible description that can be It's a horrible description that can be misinterpreted to believe that I actually think there are first and second-class learners. I do not, right? And if that upset people, I'm, I'm very sorry about it. Um, but I, I also feel like the way this was sensationalized, sensationalized was disingenuous, and I feel that way from my specific reasons, my experience of the events, um, the way in which they did not engage with me in any shape or form, and went to the press. And that's how I feel, and I, I don't expect you to agree with me, um, but that's just my, my perspective. Um, so that, I, I hope that helps you understand. And even in this explanation, I'm sure I've said things that are not, um, you know, the most, uh, delicate, and, and I'll preemptively apologize for that. Um, because this is obviously a difficult conversation.
Uh, Member Agna.
I had a, just had a coughing fit, so I hope I can speak. Um. I was motivated to draft this statement myself on vacation because of what I read in the Gazette, um, because I wasn't sure exactly how I felt we needed to approach it as a whole school committee before I read the Gazette article, which felt to me like airing some laundry that was not appropriate. And I was sorry about that because it becomes part of the public discourse then. And my first thought was, if there are any students who hadn't heard that term, those terms before the Gazette article, there were many who heard it after it. And I know that because I heard from some. So I felt as, as a leader in this community, that there needed to be a very clear statement to our students about that. I am really concerned about how some motivations are being described in the response to Member Stein's labels um, by you, Member Stein, because I, I'm not sure that it is something that is appropriate for us to do. And I also feel very strongly, I've always talked with students about this, to use iMessages. I felt this way, or I was concerned about that, rather than you being disingenuous or, um, other terms that are being used. So I'm, I guess I'm just really concerned about what has been said tonight. And I would like to have this statement put officially in, but I feel like there's a lot of, there's going to be a lot more repair to do as a result of, again, what was said tonight, and I'm really, really concerned. I feel as emotional as you do, Kaya, about this, that, um, I, I ran for school committee because I had such faith in the process. I have such determined faith in supporting democracy, and I think all we have left right now is our public schools. And I am really concerned about going down this, th- this is a rabbit hole of going down about accusing people's motivations, or whether they were offended or not, or whatever. This is, feels to me incredibly disrespectful of our community. So I, I don't know. I, I feel at a loss. I feel very emotional about this because of being very devoted to the teachers and the students and the families in, in Northampton, and that we really need to return to that part of leadership in the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Member Miller. I just wa- I resonate with both Member Agna and Member Goldman, but I also feel like, Member Stein, that there's some miscommunication going on. Um, Member Goldman's question was that I think you need to answer separately from the second point you wanted to make. The first one, although I believe I know the answer to this, I would like to give you the opportunity to say this, only this part. Member Goldman is asking whether you regret and apologize for using the term first-class learners and second-class learners. I believe that you, in your explanation, you said that that was your own experience, that you felt like people treated you that way, or that you experienced this yourself. But I think the concern is whether the larger community, including children, will mishear this and want to know whether you actually apologize for using that specific term. I'm just going to put that out there right now, that question, just that, only that.
Can I respond?
Absolutely.
Okay. I really appreciate you framing, um, framing it that way and sort of helping, um, the communication between me and, and Member Goldman and others. And, um, yeah, no, thank you. And yes, I unequivocally am sorry for using first and second-class learners, period.
Can I ask a second question?
Sure.
I think the separate part of your statement had nothing to do with your apology. I think your apology is genuine, that you are saying you apologize for using those terms. And I guess the other piece is something you're suggesting people may not agree with, which is you felt that by publicizing it in the Gazette, that the motivations you were assuming had nothing to do with your actual mistake, and that there was other issues that were involved. I just wanted to clarify for everyone that I truly, I did already believe, but I'm glad to hear you say it publicly, that you are very sorry that you used those terms, and that you didn't mean it that way. Because, uh, again, I will say, we're all make mistakes about that kind of thing, and on the spot, use the words we regret. And I think that was a mistake that we've all learned from now, that we have to be very careful with our wording. So I just wanted to say that, um, I don't think there's any disagreement about that. We all appreciate that apology. Thank you.
And, and thank you for walking through those two elements. I appreciate that, um, a lot. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands, uh, Member Davis? You're muted though, Member Davis.
Okay, I'll try to be quick. My, my only thought was, going back to a, a little bit ago, Member Stein, that you were saying that you weren't feeling comfortable, or however you worded it, voting or approving the statement that Member Agna created um, or wrote. And so that's the piece that, especially considering what you just acknowledged or said or agreed upon with Member Miller, it feels confusing to me about how we go forward, really being a group with one voice about how we feel. Um, um, with, with, with what I believe to be a straightforward view of what somebody on a school committee believes, which is that we're here for the students and staff and teachers and our community with one vision about our schools. Um, being unified on this statement seems pretty important. We're going to all group, group the apology. That's all.
Any further comments on the motion on the floor? Member Stein?
Um, just sort of a response to Member Davis. I know it wasn't a, a question, but, um, I certainly appreciate your concern with that being um, a, a, uh, important part of this, right, that there is unity. Um, I think it's hard for me, as written, to get there. I think what Member Miller suggested about the inclusion of the preamble would probably go a long way for me. Uh, I don't know where we are in the, uh, friendly amendments on that, um, but, um, you know, I think that would, that would probably, uh, make me feel like, um, some of my perspective is, is in there, um, as well. Um, so I, I don't know if, I, I actually don't know where we are, if that was ever suggested or not, um.
I believe, Member Agna, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that Member Agna accepted that as a friendly amendment.
Fantastic.
I second it.
So that has been added to the statement. The pre- preamble or the, the statement, the pre-statement that Gwen read. Sorry, Member Agna, right? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please, Annie, on, um, accept or on authorizing, uh, Member Agna to issue that statement with the addition that was just discussed. Um. Thanks.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Goldman? I'm sorry, Member Goldman, I didn't.
Muted.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Skara?
Yes.
Member Robbins?
Yes.
Member Gazy?
Yes.
And Member Stein?
Yes.
Okay, that has, uh, been authorized, and we are moving on to um, announcing the future, over here, sorry, uh, business and meeting dates. All of these meetings will be held via Zoom um, until further notice. So there is negotiating subcommittee Tuesday, March 1st, that's tomorrow at 5:00 PM. The joint school councils meeting Tuesday, March 8th, 4:00 PM. School committee, uh, Thursday, March 10th, 6:30 PM. Rules and policy subcommittee Wednesday, March 16th at 4:00 PM. Curriculum subcommittee Wednesday, March 23rd at 5:00 PM. And again, a general school committee meeting Thursday, March 24th at 6:30 PM. And we are now going to enter into executive session. I'm going to say that we are going to, um, exit executive session, um, and come back for a vote, and then adjourn in an open meeting. Um, but to enter executive session, would someone make that re- motion or request?
I can read it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, motion to request to enter executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Open Meeting, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I think I got three. Uh, Member Agna, I think was the first. Um, okay, so again, uh, we're going to do a roll call on that, but again, I just want to make sure the public knows that we will be um, coming back out of executive session for a final vote of the evening, and then adjourning from an open public, uh, meeting. Um, so roll call, please, Annie?
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Agna?
You're muted, Member.
Yes, yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Skara?
Yes.
Member Robbins?
Yep.
Member Gazy?
Yes.
Uh, Member Stein?
Yes.
And Member Levy?
Yes.
Mayor, what we used to do is put everybody in a, the waiting room while we went to executive session, but I, I don't know if you want to do that, or do you want me to create a breakout room? If we do that, I will have to transfer my hosting powers to somebody else while we do that, so I can take the minutes in executive session.
Um, we can, I can enable the waiting room again, and you, you want to put people into a waiting room, which is an easier option.
I think the waiting room is an easier option, um,
Thank you.